All right, I think we have everybody. All right, this is the City Council joint meeting with the Planning Commission. It's a regular meeting and it is just a little after 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and it is a virtual meeting. And Lita, will you do the roll call? Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine. Thank you. Our meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. The city is now using Zoom webinar to host its public meetings. To join Zoom webinar on the web, https://us/j97743476957 by telephone dial 253-215-8782 and enter the following webinar ID when prompted, 977-43476957. To view live, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21, the city YouTube channel or YouTube site, and then the Comcast channel TV21, and that is within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. The city website again is www.samamish.us/tv21 and YouTube or Comcast Channel 21, and that is again within Samamish only. And first off, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And how about Mr. Baughman? Could you lead us with that?
As soon as I find my mute button. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then first off, we have the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, is this just for the joint session or is this for the entire meeting? Are these like two separate meetings?
It's for the entire meeting.
But there's still an opportunity on consent later, Pam.
I know, I don't want to, I'm not worried about consent. I want to add something to the agenda then.
Okay.
I want to add another item to our executive session because it's my understanding that you overruled the will of four councilmembers to add an item to the executive session this evening.
I did not overrule four. I did not overrule four, but go ahead.
So I'd like to add that we get an update on our investigation into a city employee.
Okay, that has been rescheduled and it was not put on only because we could not guarantee a time.
I'd like to add that to the agenda. We've been waiting for many, many months now to get an update on this. So I move that we add that to the agenda. And that is not my understanding, the email that you sent was that you said the agenda was too busy and that you didn't want to add it even though there were four councilmembers who wanted to add it to the agenda tonight. That's what we have in your email from you.
If you go back and reread that, so I will.
I would be happy to read it into the record.
Is that, okay, and I can do that? Take a vote of the council?
Actually, I have a motion. Does anyone second my motion?
I'd like to ask a question. First of all, please don't count me on the floor. I have been completely off email for about two weeks because of my father. So I haven't been engaged on the topic. I don't even know if we're prepared to have this conversation tonight. So if Councilmember Odell is on and can tell us if we're even prepared, that might be helpful.
I spoke with Councilmember Stewart a few minutes ago, at which point she learned that this is, was excluded from tonight's agenda. I've not been communicating what's on or what's on or not on deliberately. I was going by what Mayor Moran said. She and I again talked this morning, same issue. We have them lined up to come next Tuesday, at which point the investigation I think will be well along. I'm not sure the investigator is prepared to talk tonight. I reached out to both of the individuals, the investigator plus the attorney, to see if they could be available this evening. And I called both, called both and emailed both, but I don't know if we're going to be in position to have a discussion tonight or not.
I just want to enter for the record that I have grave concerns because Councilmember Odell did email and say that, I'm sorry, I misspoke Kristi, that he had two other councilmembers who wanted to add it to the agenda and Mayor Moran responded and said, we have a packed agenda and those agendas are set two weeks in advance. And so changing it on the Friday before meeting is not an easy task, although our agendas change all the time between Fridays and Tuesdays. So I am very concerned that this continues to be getting delayed and kicked down, the can keeps getting kicked down the road. It has been seven months since this issue was raised and we are still waiting to get updates and conclusions on this, and it's a very serious matter. So I have grave concerns. And I have grave concerns that the mayor is overriding the will of when we have three councilmembers and want to add something to the agenda, is my understanding from the council rules that you do not have the authority to override that.
I'm sorry, where, I'm sorry, Pam, maybe you could point out to me, Councilmember Stewart, where in there it said we wouldn't do it? Because I don't recall.
You said, you, I will read your email from Karen Moran on 10:01 at 1:54 PM.
I'm aware of what it says, but in there, can you state exactly where it says that it won't happen? Because it does not say that in there. I said, "It's difficult to rearrange a tough schedule." It's a difficult task, and it is.
So then why is it not on the agenda tonight?
I think I made myself clear before.
It was not clear to me before. Why, why is it not on the agenda?
We have it rescheduled for next week when everybody can be here.
Everybody's here now.
All right, if you'd like to have it, but you don't have a second to your motion. And you don't have the attorneys here.
I'll second it, but I doubt if we can find the attorneys tonight at this point.
So Councilmember Odell, thank you for seconding that. Can, can you tell me what your conversation was with Mayor Moran that we weren't able to get the attorneys lined up? Because I just, I don't want to, I don't want to translate the conversation we had.
The conversation basically was by email, although we did speak. And I had been waiting to hear from her about whether or not this is actually going to happen tonight. And I reached the point where I finally had Fisher cut bait, so I called her. And I don't recall the precise conversation, but we wound up pushing it to next week.
So even though Mayor Moran, you promised to get back to Councilmember Odell to see if it could be fit into the schedule, you did not get back to him to let him know whether you had added it to the agenda or not. Is that correct?
No, you know, I didn't call him back on the weekend. I apologize for that.
Did you call him back yesterday after you said that you were having a meeting? You said in your email that you would have a meeting, you said, "I'm having a meeting with the Chair in about an hour to see if we can try to limit the time from running over. We have a packed agenda and agendas are set two weeks in advance." So that was an hour, that was Friday afternoon.
You know, Councilmember, would you like to make your, could you make your motion and let's move forward on this and we can have that discussion later, please?
I was speaking to my motion.
Great.
I did make my motion and I was speaking to my motion.
Okay, and then could we move forward from this, please?
I've spoken to my motion. We've been waiting seven months to get an update on an investigation. It was asked to be added to the agenda and the follow-up failed to happen from the mayor and now we have to wait yet another week.
Yes, yes, I didn't stop anything because there's still people being interviewed, but that's fine. Okay, so I guess we have, we have a first, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, please. Sorry, I can't find the raise hand picture.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I, thank you. I'm certainly supportive of getting this download, but I think it is imperative that the attorneys are present. And so if that wasn't rearranged for this meeting, I think it's fruitless to add it. I think we'd be better off planning for next week, Councilmember Stewart, when we know they can be present. I'm supportive of getting information as well. I'm just trying to make myself clear on that front, but we're not going to get information if we don't have attorneys present.
I just want to make sure that it doesn't get pooted off again because this, this is unacceptable. It keeps getting put, it was on an agenda in September and it got pushed off. And I feel like there's, there's a purposeful stonewalling or slow rolling of this and this is, this is not acceptable.
It's still ongoing, so there's nothing that's stopping it. But I couldn't promise a time for this evening. And I still couldn't promise a time today for this evening.
Some of us are waiting patiently in line with our hands up.
Okay, let me, and I can't see the hands up, so hold on. And so for my patient ones, let me go to, and the not so patient ones, so Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, a couple of corrections. We haven't been waiting seven months for an update. We've had several updates throughout the interim of this investigation. So it's totally incorrect to say we've been waiting for an update. We've been updated regularly in executive sessions and privately, and I believe in public sessions. So let's just be honest about the conversation and keep things factual. We have not been waiting seven months for any updates on this. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, because I'm having a problem seeing the hands stuff even on my side panel, so.
Yeah, my, my computer's not functioning very well tonight. I have to shut down, go to another machine. But just to the timeline issue, it actually took us two months to get organized, to hire someone to do the investigation. The investigation has been underway for five months. And as, as of today, the last, it's my belief that the last major player was interviewed by the investigator, which is why when we ran into this issue of timing today, I basically conceded and said, okay, let's just wait till next week. At that point, I released both investigator and the attorney from tonight's meeting. So it's my fault, but at the same time, investigations, particularly this one, where you have varying degrees of cooperation from the individuals being interviewed and even them.
Are we supposed to be discussing a private investigation in a public forum? Giving out details on the investigation?
Very good, very good point. Very good point, but the, the point is we'll be in much better shape next week to do this, although I support Pam's motion that we do discuss it. I'd be willing to go further in a short executive tonight if you wish. Karen, you're muted.
Seeing, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So councilmembers, not seeing any, call out if you have one, and I'm not catching it. Seeing that, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of adding this to the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, aye? Okay, so can you, Lita, could you please do a roll? All those in favor, please say aye. Karen Moran?
Nay.
Nay. Kristi Malchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin? Councilmember Odell? Councilmember Chris Ross? Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Kent Trine? Sorry, I believe. The nays? The nays. Okay, so it does not pass.
No, four, no, the ayes have it. There were four ayes.
The ayes, though? Oh, I'm sorry, the other way around.
There were four ayes.
Four ayes. Okay, that, that's where I was getting confused too. Sorry. Okay. All right, so we will add it, we can add it to the executive session. Who want it added, who can add it at the end? Perfect. Okay, now, we'll add it as a second executive session at the end. Now.
At the end, we can't just have one executive session and put it in the executive session?
You know, no, seeing how long it took us to get through that, and we've got a lot of other stuff going on, I think we'd better add it. So.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion that we combine it with the existing executive session and not put it at the very end so that we can get, we have a shot at getting the attorneys here.
Oh, Tom, were you going to try to get attorneys here?
I have notes, messages out to both of them.
All right, well, how about if, okay, if Tom can get, how about if Tom can get attorneys and we hear back that he can get both attorneys here, we'll do it at the first, if not, we'll do it at the end. Does that work? I'm really trying to get us through our agenda as fast as possible, which it is now seven twenty.
We'll see when the attorneys can come. Maybe we can adjust once we hear back from them. Is that acceptable, Madam Mayor?
Well, that's kind of what I just said. Okay, so all those in favor of the agenda as adjusted, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye. Nay.
I'm also a nay. Okay, now, let's move forward.
Karen, I'm going to leave briefly and come back in.
Okay, so next up, we have got introductions. And I am going to let, Mark, I'm going to let you go first on this one.
So kind of you, Madam Mayor. Sure, okay, I'll go first and just saying that I think the commissioners are all glad to be joining everyone this evening. Just a couple of comments. I would say that I've been on the Planning Commission now four years and I've really enjoyed the work and the, that we've done and the, the people that I've met. I do feel, I think, a little bit like many of us feel, that we've been cheated a little bit by having to do everything virtual for, you know, almost two years, a year and a half or so. But I am proud with the Planning Commission that we found a way to, to work together and continue our work to support the City Council in doing the work of the citizens of Samamish. I think that, you know, we've, we've done a lot of different things, wide variety of things on the Planning Commission, from my favorite topic, the, the wireless code update, to lots of development regulations, things that we've done in various phases. And we've always tried to find a way to enjoy working together, but also keep our eyes on the importance of the tasks that we're trying to accomplish. So I think I can speak for the entire commission in saying that we all think that this is important work. Samamish is a unique and special place and, and as a commission, we're grateful for the opportunity and the privilege to participate in shaping the future and also protecting the future of our community, community. So again, thank you. Up till now, it's been fun and I'm looking forward to continuing in that way.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark. I am going to, hold on, I wrote, I wrote a lot of notes here. And so I want you to, if you can give me just a second. Well, and I wanted to take a minute and thank all of the people that are on the Planning Commission and thank them for, well, one, their patience this evening and remind everybody that, you know, it is indeed, it is indeed campaign season. And so, you know, this is the sort of thing that happens in campaign season. And I wanted to thank them for being so patient. But I also want to thank them for all the things that they have done for the district, for what they've taken on with the development regs and what they've taken on with their hearings and, and all the workload that you guys have taken on over the last year. And you guys have done an awful lot of work and you've done a lot of listening to the public for us and, and getting that information back to us. And I want you to know that we do appreciate it and that we, we do listen to the information and we do read the information that you send to us. And so I really wanted to take just a minute and, and thank you wholeheartedly for all the work that you do for us. It's very much appreciated. And, you know, if for some reason, sometimes we, we don't agree on every aspect, just, just know that we really do appreciate everything that you do.
Madam Mayor, can we have everyone introduce themselves? Because I don't think we've had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission as it currently stands, so it would be really helpful if everyone from the Planning Commission would turn on their camera and introduce themselves.
Oh, that would be great. Mark, I'm going to have you do that. Have you go around and introduce, have everybody go through and introduce everybody because I think that the deputy mayor is probably accurate in that.
Well, I'll do, I'll do my introduction. Mark Baughman, I have been chair of the Planning Commission for a couple of years and I'm going to try to keep my mouth shut mostly tonight. So let's, why don't I call out the commissioners and you guys can, that way we'll stay organized and you guys can just each introduce yourselves as we go. So Mike Presko?
Yeah, I've been a member for a year and a half. I think I attended one in-person meeting, so everything is on Zoom, so I have no way to judge any other type of meeting. So glad to be part of the commission.
Josh Amato?
Josh Amato, I was appointed in 2019 and we've really enjoyed, or I've, I know for sure, I've really enjoyed the work we've been able to do.
Karen, look for your mute button.
There it is. Okay, there we go. I have to tell you that I, I'm not an Apple user, so the iPad is somewhat of a challenge for me and I don't use it every day. I only use it for these meetings, so please forgive me for not pressing on the right button. But anyway, I've been on less than a year and I have to say, I feel like a lot of what we've done has been over my head, but I follow along and I try to understand what's going on. And yeah, it's been really interesting and I hope that the next phase I can be more helpful. Thank you.
Karthik Satharaman?
Can you guys hear me?
You bet.
Yeah, okay, I pressed the right button. Hi, this is Karthik, been on the Planning Commission since last year along with Mike Presko and certainly agree with Mark that we have, you know, the opportunity to work together in person has been stolen away from us, but I think we've been able to contribute quite well in the last couple of years. Look forward to working with my fellow commissioners and the council in the upcoming years. Thank you.
And I will mention the two folks that we're missing this evening. Rituja Indipri is off on a work travel assignment, so she couldn't be here, and TC Labby, who had a family emergency and couldn't be here. And that's the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving forward, we have got two items that we are going to work together on, and the two are the docket requests and then the visioning project. So the first thing up is the docket requests. And I think Mark and I had spoke yesterday and in hopes, and this is already not going to work because we were hopes to be done on time, but that's not going to work. And I'm glad we didn't make that bet. So there you go. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to try to switch off a little bit here with a question from council and a question from the Planning Commission, and we'll try to switch off to try to make sure that we're, you know, a little even on who's asking questions. And then, and then we're going to try to stay as on time as we can. But that, like I said, that's already going to be the fact that we're starting off 35 minutes late. Okay, so the first presentation is the proposed docket requests and for 2022, and that is going to be with David Pyle and Evan Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have our annual comprehensive plan and development regulations docket presentation. This will be presented to you by Evan Fisher, who's a senior management analyst in the Department of Community Development, and I'll turn it over to Evan.
Great, thank you, David, and thank you, Planning Commission and City Council. Can everyone see my screen? I think everything is coming through correctly. I have a thumbs up from David, so I will continue on. Great, awesome, thank you. So good evening, City Council and Planning Commission. My name is Evan Fisher with DCD, and tonight we will be starting review of the 2022 docket requests. This brief presentation is informational only and nothing is being asked of the City Council or Planning Commission tonight, but instead it is meant to help familiarize you with this year's docket requests and provide you an opportunity to ask questions. The annual docket is a requirement of the Growth Management Act and is a process for considering text amendments or site-specific land use map amendments to the city's comprehensive plan or development regulations in the Samamish municipal code. Anyone is able to submit a docket request as long as they do so by the annual deadline of 5:00 PM on the first Friday of August of each year. The first, the first step in the process is deciding which proposals should, that should be put on the docket for consideration in 2022. After tonight's joint session, the Planning Commission will have a public hearing on November 4th and be asked to make a recommendation to the City Council on which items should be docketed. City Council will have a public hearing on December 7th and vote on a resolution to set the docket. During the Planning Commission and City Council meetings in November and December, staff will provide their recommendations and analysis on each docket request. Any items that are set on the docket will be considered during the legislative review of the individual proposals during the following year. There are important criteria to consider when reviewing potential docket items. Again, there are no decisions being made tonight as this is just an informational meeting, but it's important to keep these criteria in mind as we move forward. These criteria are, how do the docket requests align with staff work plan items? Is there budget to complete the work? Is there staff availability to complete a full review of their requests? And are the proposals consistent with current staff policies and priorities? Per Title 24A, the recommendations staff will provide will evaluate each request based on these criteria. Now we'll take a look at the five docket requests we received this year. This presentation provides a high-level look at each request with more detail and staff recommendations being provided during the Planning Commission and City Council meetings in November and December. The first request was submitted by city staff and is a, and is a proposed text amendment. The request asks for the addition of a roadway segment or corridor level of service standards to the comprehensive plan and development regulations to address transportation level of service standards and capital facility needs associated with environmental impacts. Requests two, three, four, and five are all citizen-initiated and are proposed text amendments to the development regulations. Request two is asking the city to consider adjusting clearing and grading regulations by adjusting the city's threshold for when SEVA is triggered during clearing and grading, setting lifetime limits on types of clearing and grading, considering a 100 cubic yard exemption threshold for clearing and grading, and lowering thresholds in critical areas. and lowering thresholds in critical areas, and reviewing and updating the definition of fill. Request 3 asks the city to consider updating its tree regulations by specifying pruning limits on tree or plant species, providing tree removal options for landowners with parcels in case, in cases of tree problems or lack of water, and developing rules or guidance around removing invasive species, right plant, right place, and encouraging snags as appropriate. Request 4 asks the city to consider developing or clarifying lighting regulations to specify the number of lights allowed, locations of lighting, lighting types, size, brightness, shielding, and allowed use to reduce heat and light pollution that will promote wildlife and salmon population recovery. And Request 5 asks the city to develop and implement a septic management program that would inventory the city's remaining septic systems, perform outreach to septic system owners, create loan programs for future sewer connections, identify septic system failing points, and identify when sewers should be connected. Those are the, this year's five docket requests. And again, we'll be bringing these to the Planning Commission on November 4th and to the City Council on December 7th. Staff's role during this process is to make sure you have all the information you need to make your decision. So please feel free to ask questions tonight, call or email us, and we'll work to get your questions answered. And with that, we are happy to open it up for questions.
Okay, and I am going to put them in the order of which I see them. And I am going to, as I said, I will be calling on the council. And I'm going to leave, Mark, I'm going to leave it up to you to be calling on the commission. And so first I see is the deputy mayor.
Thanks, just happened to grab the unmute button. I'm assuming you don't want us to get into feedback on these. We're just kind of digesting them as that, what I heard as far as sentiment here, or does the Planning Commission want to hear from council members on their thoughts?
Mark, I'll maybe let you defer to that second question. But I think, Deputy Mayor, you're correct that we're going to keep it kind of high-level tonight and quick and get into more detail during the next meetings.
Okay, I'll hold my comments then because mine are very specific to the docket requests themselves.
Great, thank you.
I see Mike Presko has a question.
Yeah, just a quick clarifying question for Evan. I assume that as preparation for the meeting that we'll have in November, you'll provide us with the alignment with the work plans and the budget, and, you know, basically the effort it'll take for each of the docket items?
That's correct, yeah. We'll provide all that at the next meeting and look at how it would potentially fit in with other 2022 work plan items if there would be budget constraints or available budget to complete the work. So all that will be coming.
Okay, thank you.
If there is a moment, I, I wanted to add a clarification around the, the docket requests and how this typically unfolds for us in the following year during the legislative cycle. And wanted to make sure everyone was aware that typically the staff have more docket requests lined up. And the docket is cumulative. So the docket items that have been placed on the city's docket in years past don't go away unless action is taken by the council to remove them from the, the running docket. So it's important to keep in mind that, that as staff set our work plan going forward and as we meet with the City Council as part of the retreat early in the year, and as we set the, the department's work plan and assign budget resources and staff resources, that we typically don't have adequate budget or staff to take on all of the docket items that end up being put on our work plan. We try our best, but we do have a few that remain out there. And we will be wanting to talk to the council at your retreat coming up next, this, this next January, with the hopes that we could talk about an approach to review the cumulative docket items that we have running and make a determination as to which should proceed so that staff know how to prioritize those. So I just wanted to get that, that piece of input added so everyone's aware of how that process works. And I'll turn it back over to the, the council and commission for further comment or question.
Okay, I'm looking for hands up and I see council member Stuart.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. One, it looks like all of these are categorized as just text amendment docket requests. None of them are the land use type that you put in the presentation. Is that correct?
Correct, they're all text amendments. And there are no site-specific land use map amendments that have been submitted this year.
Great, and then there, we did get a public comment in, in a, in writing. And there was a question, how, how were the, how was it advertised? Because I have to say, I didn't see that either. How was it advertised this year to get docket requests and comments on the, the requests that were submitted? And that may be something you have to go back and get. But, but I, I did not see that kind of come through on, on a lot of our normal channels either.
Sure, that's a good question. So this, on the city's website, we have an annual docket page that is updated throughout the year based on the, the current stage of the process. So as soon as the docket comment period opened last year, we updated the page to accept new docket requests. And that remains open all year long. And like I said in the presentation, the deadline for docket requests is the, the first Monday of August of each year.
Right, how was that, did we advertise that though? Because I mean, most people aren't going to know to go find that page, right? So normally, if we have something important, we, we have all sorts of methods and ways that we push that out to people. So did we do that? Did we advertise that to the folks? Because let me put it this way, when Mary Witter and Paul Stickley don't know about something, it usually means we didn't do a very good job of advertising it because they are all over this stuff, right?
Sure, I take your point, yeah. And we didn't do anything different from years past as far as advertising. I think we made maybe one or two announcements during Planning Commission meetings. But again, that might be a fairly limited audience. So I think that's a good note for future docket requests is to, you know, advertise more intentionally.
Because I think in the past, we've put it on our site, haven't we? Like, you know, if you go to the Samamish website, there's like, you know, the hot items. There's like usually like five things that I'll scroll through. So I think in past years, we've put it there so people know, you know, come submit a, a docket thing. And I don't think we did that this year, did we?
That's a good question. I, I don't recall often, David, I'm not sure if you know.
So I don't recall us doing that in years past. I do see Miriam Leitner has joined us. But I did want to make one statement that I'm not aware of any cities that advertise the closure of their docket process for the years coming. And, you know, it, it is, it's, it's complex because if, if you have too many docket requests that really are unviable, it takes an enormous amount of staff time to sift through them and unwind them. So you do need to be kind of careful around how you collect these and how you screen them and which ones you let through the door. Given that we do have a limited staff capacity, if, if we were to advertise it broadly, social media, et cetera, you might see a huge uptick in the number of requests we receive, which might be good in some ways. But as a council, you also need to balance that with the amount of staff resource you have available. It's likely that, that a, a full-out advertising of the docket closure period could result in a, a huge number of proposals that then you would have to hire additional staff to sift through. And that would be an additional cost to the city. So it's really the balancing act that the council wants to take. If you want us to do that, we will do that. But we will likely come back with an ask to add additional staff in order to support that.
I was just going to add, we did work with our communications team. And I believe, I know they posted something in the e-newsletter that goes out. And I believe they also posted to social media as well. I can confirm that though with further research.
Thanks, Miriam, I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask a question, I would like to ask a quick one of Evan and David. Because this year's docket list or proposed potential docket list is only one staff generated and everything else a single individual, which is somewhat unusual. Is there anything that we're going to do different in the process to hear from that person? Or to, it, it's just a different situation when you have a single person generating, what is it, four out of the five requests? And I'm wondering, other than the normal public comment process, is there any way within the latitude of the rules to, to do anything different? Or do you think we should?
David, do you have any thoughts on?
Sure, I was thinking about that. You know, on, on the one hand, providing opportunity for the individual responsible for the proposal to explain it would be helpful. However, on the, on the opposite side, if the docket proposal is not refined and presented in a way when it's submitted to support itself and needs additional, this is what I'm talking about with regard to the amount of work it takes for us to get something that is received through the portal and end up churning it into something that is screen-ready for the commission and the council. So we have already put in quite a bit of effort on these to try and understand them and to try to make sure that the, they're presented in a way that the council and commission can understand. If, if you want us to allow for that, then we could do that. However, understand that could set precedent. And that in the future, if we were to receive a larger number, that we would then be in the same position of offering each individual who presented one to then provide a presentation to the commission and the council on that.
Okay, so we, is there anybody else? Before we go to second rounds here, do, is there anybody else who has any questions? Okay, council member Stuart.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, David, on that note, I guess one, one thing that strikes me when you, when you bring that up is that the, the city staff submitted docket requests did seem a little bit vague to me this year. Like, all the docket requests I've ever seen in the past were incredibly specific. And usually, they don't come through as a docket request unless they're very specific. And this one seems more like a placeholder. And that seems unusual. Can you speak to, is that usual? Is that even allowed? Should, doesn't it have to be specific as opposed to just a generic, we think we might want to do something?
So it, it has to be specific enough, specific enough for us to know where in the comprehensive plan or where in the code a change might begin to be made. So in this case, the, the proposal holds the door open. And we already know that it is on the work plan. We are processing an environmental impact statement regarding changes that could be made to the comprehensive plan and to the development regulations. So what this does is it enables the council, should they choose to take action, to take action without then having to wait an additional year to docket it. We, we know that this is something that is of interest to the council and we have been directed to study it. So it is fair to think that it is something the council may choose to adopt in some form. The state law is pretty specific about that so long as the proposal is placed on the docket, it might evolve over time from what is originally placed on the docket. Title 24, the city's comprehensive plan, or excuse me, that the city's Development Regulations Municipal Code that, that governs docket proposals also identifies that, that the council could choose to modify the docket proposal going forward in order to, as new information is made available. So to answer your question, it's, it could be very specific. It could also be, I wouldn't say vague, but, but offer multiple different paths forward as more information becomes available and as the topic is studied more closely.
When, when would you anticipate? Because from a public hearing perspective, the public doesn't know what to comment on because there isn't any level of specificity of, other than we want to add something there. And it, it feels like from a public hearing perspective and allowing the public an opportunity to weigh in, we need, they need that level of specificity to, to provide that comment. So will that be available before the public hearings occur?
There will be some additional detail regarding the proposal, the docket item. However, it's up to the council, the commission and the council. If the commission and the council choose through public hearing and through the selection process and passing of resolution that you choose not to docket it, that's your prerogative. So I'd leave it back with the council at that point.
Okay, well, I certainly hope we get some specificity for the, for the publics. Because, you know, changing the comprehensive plan is, is a big deal. And so we definitely want to get a lot of public input on any changes we would make to our comprehensive plan. And I feel like people need to know what that is. And I think you guys have done a great job as staff at really making sure that the ones that come in from the public have, you know, a really great level of detail and specificity. So we know exactly what we're deciding on. So I'm hoping we can get to that level of specificity for the, for the one from the city as well. Thanks.
And, and just to be clear, that the docket process does not necessarily mean what is listed as the docket item will ultimately be what is adopted or approved. There's quite a bit of work that goes into this. Once something is added to the docket, it gets put on the legislative work plan, and it ends up taking up a life of its own, if you will. So each of the items that gets, ultimately gets put on the docket by way of resolution ends up being the, a, a work item that could land on the department's work plan. At that point, additional research is done. There are workshops sessions with the Planning Commission and the council. There are public hearings that are held. So just to be clear, just because something is shown a certain way does not ultimately mean that is what will be adopted in code or comp plan at a later date.
Okay. I don't see any other, unless I'm missing something, I don't see any other. Any other hands? Do we have any other questions?
I don't see anything from the commission.
Okay, council member Trin, are you going to have a question for me?
No, I'm just frustrated, I can't see myself on the camera. And my camera's just being all wacky. I like to see myself, so I don't know if you guys see me, so.
We don't know, we did before, okay. All right, after not having any more questions, then we will move on to our next topic. We might get through this, guys. The next topic of presentation is the visioning project.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have our visioning team that is, consists of Miriam Leitner, who is our planning manager, Sarah Steery, who is one of our management analysts, and Christina Hayworth, who is our consultant with OTAC, who is supporting this effort. I'll turn it over to Christina and Sarah to provide a presentation to be followed by a discussion with the commission and council.
Thank you, David, and good evening, everyone. Thank you so much in advance for joining and participating in tonight's presentation that ends with a short activity. So I'm going to share my screen and just jump right in. Can everyone see this okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
So David mentioned, my name is Christina. I am a consultant working on this project. This is the Samamish Community Visioning Project. The, the presentation that will follow tonight introduces the purpose and background of this project, reviews very quickly our public engagement strategy that's guiding this effort, and then wraps up with a reflection activity that looks at the current vision statement. So what is this project? This project will ensure that the city has a strong and clear vision that will inform and guide the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update Process. This is really important because it really sets the, the groundwork for goal-setting, policymaking, and decision-making. As we move into it, we understand that the City Council has some key priorities. Those were, as I understand them, to gather community input that informs the vision statement, understand and respond to any potential changes that have occurred in community sentiment since 2015, when the last vision statement was adopted, perform all of this work inclusively, and make sure that that vision statement really becomes the driving force of the comp plan update. We understand as we're embarking on this project that the outcome could, could take a number of forms. Based on the, the community input, we could be affirming the existing vision statement unchanged. We could be revising the existing statement just to update it to reflect current community priorities. Or we could be creating a new statement that more closely reflects community priorities and values. We also understand that there's a, a big emphasis on equity and inclusion and outreach for this project. We also understand that there's a big emphasis on equity and inclusion and outreach for this project. So how will engagement be performed to meet all of those goals? I will refer also to the engagement strategy that's in your packet. That was a draft that we included when the packet was printed, and it since evolved a little bit, and we've gotten a few more things on the calendar. So our engagement strategy is driven by these three goals. We're focused on engaging everyone in this community, including underrepresented and underserved groups, aligning our work products with community voices, and obtaining high-quality data necessary to support our recommendation. And this last goal really speaks to the city council's interest in a statistically valid community survey. The strategy also identifies some broad groups of key stakeholders and some specific subgroups to make sure that we're really capturing everybody's input collectively. The strategy really focuses primarily on residents through schools, potentially through community groups and religious institutions to try and access as many people as possible. We also conducted a short online engagement preferences poll. This is somewhat limited, given that there were fairly few responses overall. But of the responses that we received, about 5% were interested in some kind of in-person option, like pop-up booths or these outdoor interactive activities. 95% of responses were interested in some kind of virtual outreach option. So that really informed our strategy as well. We've got a mix of digital and in-person that relies pretty heavily on the digital side based on the preference poll, but also recognizing that COVID is really preventing us from doing a lot of in-person activities right now. We are performing direct outreach to schools and community organizations and religious institutions. And we're also really happy to accommodate non-digital options, a paper version, or a phone call if people need that as well. The strategy also then outlines a bunch of different outreach tools. So we've got our Connect Samamish webpage up and running. It's actually been updated since this slide was created, and it looks a little bit different now. I highly encourage you to go and check it out. It looks great. We've got some new content on there. We're starting to populate the dates of our activities and the overall project schedule. We've got our project briefing video posted online that can be viewed by anyone at any time. We are in the process of creating a digital outreach toolkit that will really enable community organizations, teachers, and really anyone who's interested in conducting their own meeting and then providing those results back to the city. We have got some meetings and events on the calendar through October and November and all the way into February and March with the different city council and planning commission meetings that we're planning. A really big component of our outreach is going to be this survey that's offered in two formats. There's an open link digital version, and there's the statistically valid paper version that's going to be mailed to a random sample of residents. And then we've also heard that coordinating with and hearing from youth is really, really important. And so we've really endeavored to reach out directly and frequently to schools. And we've had some great engagement already with a couple of elementary schools and with the high school youth board. The survey itself, so you've got a copy of that included in your packet. This is a final draft that is headed to production next week. So it'll be translated, it'll be printed and mailed with the idea that it will hit mailboxes towards the later part of mid-October. From, so this survey was prepared by a specialty outreach subconsultant that we're working with. And it was informed by previous City of Samamish and Puget Sound Regional Council planning surveys so that we can kind of track responses over time. It focuses primarily on quality of life, preferred types of neighborhood features, really forward-looking. There's only a little bit of evaluation of the current vision statement. It also includes some questions about communication preferences and some questions about demographics that will allow us to benchmark the survey to make sure that the results that we're getting are representative of the entire community. Sorry, a little too quickly. When we do send the survey, we'll have the cover letter signed by the mayor. All right, measuring success. So I mentioned benchmarking. This is going to be used basically to do a demographic comparison to census data to make sure that when we are conducting our outreach activities that we are reaching every sector of the population as evenly as possible. To do that, we're going to be collecting information on the number of participants to make sure that we're successfully reaching people. And then on a voluntary basis, only demographic and location information to make sure that we're getting those different population groups in all different parts geographically of the city. Most of our outreach occurs this fall, October through December, or into early December. And we have also had some great events in September. Later this month, we'll be at the city town hall meeting. We've got popcorn with planning scheduled in mid-November. We're going to be visiting with the arts, parks, and recreation and human services commissions in October and early November. We've got a community-wide open house scheduled for late March, and that will be an opportunity to present final findings and recommendations once city council has had a chance to review all of those at the mid-March meeting. Our final product is going to be a report that summarizes the results of all of this community outreach that we've been doing and making a recommendation for city councils' consideration. Okay, now we'll shift gears a little bit to talk about your thoughts on the current vision statement as a group. Some of the attendees tonight may have been involved during the adoption of the current, the 2015 vision statement. Some of you are newer. The purpose of this activity is to get everyone's thoughts about the current vision statement and how it reflects Samamish as you understand it and live in it today.
I have a quick question. Sorry, Christina, I don't mean to just cut you off. And, Madam Mayor, I'm hoping we might ask questions about that first portion before we jump into the current vision statement.
I concur.
Sure, that's just fine, yes.
Karen?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I want to assume here, I see several hands are raised, which is why I jumped in, sorry. So I do want to ask some questions about the survey because I think the survey is probably one of the most important tools that we will have in order to craft our vision statement. I think, you know, we can sit here and profess what we think about the current vision statement, but I think really the piece that we need the most is the information from the survey. And so I want to ask some questions. You said the only statistically valid portion will be the paper portion, and that will be sent out, obviously, to a random selection of residents. How many per one?
It's between 4,000 and 5,000, our subconsultant group called RRC. They are generating the mailing list, and they have a formula for identifying the appropriate number of households to send this to. But I don't, I'm not sure the exact number. But it's, yeah, it's between that 4,000 and 5,000 household number.
The reason I hone in on that, I think a statistically valid survey is just that. It's statistically valid. Any other piece of this survey that we do is not statistically valid. And when we say we're, you know, selecting very certain groups to go talk to, it starts to skew the results, and I have some concerns about that, especially when we're talking about some of the groups that we are then ascertaining for our vision statement, and not all of them are residents. And I take issue with that because it's our vision statement. And one of the groups we're going to go ask about is the development community. Well, unless they live in the city, then I'm not sure that that feedback is super weighty in my personal mind. I'm more concerned about what our residents think, feel, and want as a vision statement moving forward, not what the development community wants. Or, you know, one of the subgroups that we're asking about, it's not the slide you have up, but we're going to ask people that are commuting into our city. And it's not that I don't want to hear what they have to say as far as the vision for Samamish, but my curiosity as a council member is when all of this information gets distilled and rolled back up to the city council and/or to the planning commission, I want to be able to discern and understand who said what and what came from which stakeholder group that we are trying to get information from. Because again, the one that I am personally most interested in hearing from is our residents. That's it. I want to know what they want, what they feel, what they think, and what their vision is for our city. And I want to be sure that that is set apart. And if we're weighting this in any way, that gets more weight than anything else in this visioning statement. And if this is all going to be kind of lumped together and rolled up to us, then I will have an issue with it. I want to make sure that I can tell who said what and what survey it came from, what venue it came from, whether it's a town hall, whether it was somebody put it in online, or whether it was from that statistically valid survey.
Sure, so the...
What we're doing, and ask that it be part of what we're doing.
Well, let me just get a little more in-depth on the actual end product that you'll be receiving. So you'll be receiving a report that does summarize findings for all of our engagement activities. But as part of that report, there will be a specific subsection for each of the activities that we're doing that talks about what we did, who we talked to there, what the results for that specific activity are. So there will be some generalized findings that summarize kind of common themes that we've heard across the board. But you'll also get, for example, you'll get a specific, actually, it'll be a sub-report on the statistically valid and the open link surveys. And you'll have the ability to manipulate some of the way that the results are presented so you can cross compare, cross-tab, compare the different responses by different demographic groups, for example. So you can really understand which groups have what priorities. So you'll have a lot of granularity in the survey data. You'll have a little bit less granularity from some of our other outreach activities since they're not the detailed survey responses. But those will be all things that you will be able to review and pull out separately in addition to the more generalized findings and recommendations that we have.
Okay, one of those subgroups of stakeholders that you guys were planning to reach out to is business owners, and I'd be very interested to see that broken out in business owners that are also residents and business owners that are not residents. Because I think it's important to understand through their lens how they see the city or would like to see the city in the future.
Yes, that's something that personally interests me very greatly. I think that it's really important to be fostering an entrepreneurial spirit within a community. And yeah, I agree with you entirely on that.
Thank you.
Should I call on him?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, because I see Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember Odell and Councilmember Trine all have their hands up.
Okay, if we could go in that order, so Councilmember Stewart, please.
Yeah, great, thank you so much, and I'm glad we got to ask some questions here. A couple of things. One, the one group that I want to hear from the most that won't respond necessarily or probably not to the mailed survey, because I like the statistically significant survey, is the youth group. So I do hope that we have a really, really robust outreach to the youth because, you know, this visioning statement and any changes we make to our comprehensive plan are going to impact future generations a lot more than they impact some of the current generations. So I do hope we get a lot of input from them, and because they are such a large portion of our population, and they often don't have a voice in the visioning, yet, you know, it's really mostly about them in the city. So I do hope we get to hear a lot from them. And then the other part that struck me, as you said, there'll be a cover letter that will be signed by the mayor. I think it would be far more appropriate if it's signed from the city council or even the city council and the planning commission. It shouldn't really be from the mayor, it should be from all of us.
I would agree with that. It should be signed by everybody.
Or just city council, I mean, I think, or, you know, city council and planning commission. I don't even know that it has to call us out by name. I think it could just be, you know, because it really is, you know, meant to just be, you know, "Hey, we really want you to participate. This is your chance to have a voice in, you know, shaping the future of our city." So I think that would be more appropriate, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Odell, please.
I'm sorry, one more question. You mentioned that there'd be a town hall. I don't know, what town hall?
It's scheduled through the communications department. It's going to be on October 26th, I believe it's a lunchtime event. My understanding is that these are fairly regular events. It's just a digital meeting that is an opportunity to chime in and learn about some different projects in the city and talk about some different things that are important, I think.
Okay, because I didn't see it on any communication or calendar or anything. So that was news to me that there's an upcoming town hall.
So to clarify, that's, we hold a popcorn with planning event. I don't know if you recall that. We've had a few of them now that have been pretty well-attended, you know, on trees, on single-family development regulations. And these are opportunities for the community to participate, to ask some questions, and for us to have a little bit of a dialogue about different efforts in the city or regulation changes, et cetera. So I think this one is understanding, is on for November 16th, 2021, and it's supposed to be from 12:30 to 1:30. And I think that's the idea there. I don't know if Miriam wants to step in and confirm that my understanding is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we get that, again, broadly communicated in all of our channels so that everybody has a chance to see it and plan for it. Because I don't see any mention of it in October, November on any of our calendars or anything.
Yeah, so David was correct, we are doing a popcorn with planning that will be in November. This is actually an event, as Christina mentioned, that's put on by our communications team. And I think they were finalizing the dates. I believe it's usually attended by some of our senior staff members, our city manager, the chief of police and such. So she was coordinating schedules to finalize the date. And as soon as we have that, we'll go ahead and promote it, both on our Connect Samamish page for this project, and I'm sure communications will be promoting it as well on their own channels.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that, Tom.
Councilmember Odell, you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm having to multitask here with one machine. I've got a couple of comments. First of all, let me just preface it by saying I spent four to five years running a major in-flight survey program for the bowling company. And I've been down this trail before a couple of times. So I want to start by saying I completely agree with Councilmember Mouchow on what she said about focusing on the residents of Samamish. Secondarily, the people who may work here, but I'm more inclined to pay a lot more attention to those that live here because there are a lot more than those that work here. The comment about including the youth is well-taken, and thank you, Pam, for that one. But a couple of things. First of all, the way the form is set up, first of all, in question number 12, there's some duplicates. That's a housekeeping event for you, Christina. There are several items are mentioned twice. Probably just a typo or word issue. But the other thing is I am concerned about people self-selecting to go to the online interviews. So I'm hoping we are going to allow one reply per email address so people don't just robo-bomb us with surveys and tilt it in whatever direction they want it to go. I think the comments about the interest groups are fine from Councilmember Mouchow. I agree with what she said. One thing that I haven't heard mentioned here is the use of focus groups. And finally, when you get your results in, one way of actually fine-tuning it is to hold focus groups where you bring groups of people in that are not necessarily the same part of Samamish. That could be old people, young people, even a couple of people who work here. And you put them in a room with a facilitator, and you lead a discussion. And none of that can come a lot of very useful information that the survey or the interviews, individual interviews, may not pick up. Just throw that out there as something else to possibly plan on. In fact, if anything, I would cut some of the group interviews short so you could have money left over to run a focus group or two. But I do believe that it is time for us to look at the current vision statement. I was one of the people who helped write that one. I was one of the people who helped write that one. And I believe time has marched on a little bit in some some ways in some parts of it. So I think we're overdue for that. Having said that, I'll stop and let somebody else talk. Thank you.
Thanks. I believe it's Councilmember Trean up next.
Yeah, hi. Christina Hawthorne. And I apologize. I don't know if I share my video. I don't know if you can see me, so.
It's fine. Since I'm sharing my screen, everyone's opposed to just stand, so.
Okay, so the reality, okay. Councilmember Deputy Mayor Mauchow brought it up. Thank you, by the way. How many are being sent out of the survey? So so the first question, then the follow up question to that would be, is there an additional cost if there was to be more than 4,000 to 5,000?
Yes.
Okay, so we should definitely talk about increasing the number of, I believe that we should increase the number of samples that are being sent out. And and so as someone who's more of a professional at this than I am, when you look at statistical information, sample size matters, from what I understand from my statistics class. Is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
Okay, so so the idea would be the the larger sample size and based on the validity of of the information that you're gathering and the accuracy of it, the probable outcomes from it then increase. You know, maybe we can get close to an 85 to 90% accuracy on on what we're the information we're receiving. So I would think that that would be a discussion that you might want to have with our city manager to look at budgeting there to increase the samples. Unless you don't think that statistically speaking, it would be of of a good measure for us. I think the information would be useful.
So so I did bring a specialty partner on who whose specialization area is surveys and specifically statistically valid surveys. The sample size is based on their recommendation and includes some assumptions about response rate potentially being a little bit lower, especially this time of year. So it is it is driven by their subject matter expertise. But I'm also happy to open a discussion with city staff to increase that sample size if that's something city council is very.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think you'll find that Samamish is probably doesn't fall in the norm. We may fall in as an outlier. Just saying, I've been at this for a couple of years now. The the other thing is if you go back in your slide to the who you are getting the information from, and I really do, again, appreciate Deputy City Manager, yeah, the key stakeholders. The list is way too short. Or I don't understand, and that could be true, I don't understand who these groups are, who these people are. But Councilmember Stewart was clear when she said the youth board or the youth needs to. I'm totally with that. The other would be there are neighborhoods that are kind of, we have three lake communities. That's kind of unique to a city. So we have Beaver Lake, Pine Lake, and Lake Samamish homeowners that might be interested in being, yes, I see that they are residents. But if those aren't, if they're not included, they have a different maybe, maybe have a different vision for the city than, say, somebody who lives out off of 244th and they're up against the rural community. So so then you have a whole neighborhood like Trossachs who will have a different, maybe a different vision. And so we need to talk to them and get their information. Then you would also have other HOAs, I would include like the largest neighborhood that we just annexed in, Klahani. If we're not, if you're not, sorry, let me rephrase that, sorry. Klahani would be a neighborhood that you should definitely have some representation from either in the survey or even just going to their homeowners association, have a virtual meeting and talk with them about what do a vision statement exercise with them. Similar to what Councilmember Odell was talking about with a focus group, except my idea of a focus group would be specifically to Klahani and not, I mean, he has a different idea. And I I agree with you, Tom. I think you're absolutely right, pulling different people in. But how about what was what's Klahani's vision? What would the Sahali, the Sahali neighborhood, what would their vision be for the city? Following that up, it's like, are we going to talk to the chamber? Are we going to talk to small business owners? And then are we also going to talk to the small business owners that are actually residents running their small business out of their homes? So I I think there's a group of, I don't know, 2,000 of those people in Samamish. And then how about our brick and mortar businesses? So when you say business owners, it's just kind of like, okay. I I just wonder if your details, maybe my question should be, you know, of that list and my list, are we, are you and I talking the same thing?
So these are general stakeholder groups. You know, I can't, I can't fit everything into what is supposed to be a 10 minute presentation. So yes, absolutely, there's a lot more detail within these groups. Residents includes seniors, residents includes our HOAs, residents includes youth, not just from the high school youth board, but from all different schools, from private schools, from public schools. We're, we've directly reached out to 14 different schools, for example, and requested contact with their PTAs with student groups. So there's a lot more that goes into each of these groups. But to give you a general idea of who we're trying to work with, I summarized them at this higher level. So yeah, it's it's a, it's very, we have a very detailed list. We've got a lot of people that we're trying to talk to. It's yeah, it's it's pretty detailed and it's, I think, a very robust list. And it does it very much, just to to clarify for everyone, it very much focuses on residents primarily. Those are, those are the people that are getting directly advertised to through the different Samamish media channels. Those are the people that were being that will be mailed surveys. Those are the people whose children go to school here. That's, you know, it's, it's very much resident focused. But at the same time, we want to acknowledge that there are a lot of other people that participate in this community or a lot of other ways that people participate, like, for example, through their community groups. So please rest assured that it's it's more than than just this like super high level, oh, well, like, might go knock on a couple of doors and call it good.
So Ms. Hawthorne, to my last question, because I'm going to take the seniors as an example. Because I I think that's another group that is needs to be represented. When it it's actually the the, what is your understanding of besides the survey? Okay, besides the survey, what is it that you're going to do with these, like the senior group? What is it that you actually do for this council and the planning commission to bring forward a vision statement? What is it that you're actually doing with them to get a get a vision statement?
Yeah, so so we had, actually, our first engagement event was with the seniors. We had a lunch, a lunchtime meeting with them. We had, they self-organized and provided some questions in advance. And we went through the questions about how visioning works, how it gets used to inform development regulations. And then we did an activity that's fairly similar to the activity that that we were going to do tonight. And we asked them to reflect on Samamish as as they've experienced it and to think about Samamish going forward. We asked some questions about prioritization. And so we've got some some very detailed information from that just hour long meeting. And that'll be, that'll be summarized in the report that you receive.
And then the plan is to do that with the other stakeholders.
Yeah, so it'll be a little bit different depending on which specific activity that that we're talking about. So, you know, if we're talking about youth, we've asked schools to have maybe a couple of classrooms, depending on the interest of the teachers to to get some some specific feedback on activities there. And then some more general outreach to PTAs, for for example, and circulating emails to student groups and associations, that kind of thing. So it'll be, it'll be a little bit different depending on each activity.
Christina Hawthorne, I really appreciate everything you're doing for us. And I turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I believe we have other questions in here. I see Planning Commission members Josh Amato and Mike Bresko.
Madam Mayor, do you want to let Councilmember Gamblin go first before the commission goes?
Yep, I see Ken Gamblin as well.
You got it. Hey, I'll be really brief. Christine, I'm sure my comment is probably not at all necessary because I I would imagine that the survey professionals you've hired have thought of this. But the one takeaway I have is I've heard a number of different requests for specific groups to be looked at stakeholders, students, seniors, focus groups, et cetera. My concern is this, I remember before I was on the council, how little time I had and how focused I was on other things besides this. And I just want to make the same, and I I hope that the these specific groups, stakeholders or any type of of interest groups, they don't end up getting more of a weighted value in the statement than does the general working population, the of maybe, you know, both parents working, they're very busy. They usually won't pay a lot of attention. I hope we spend a same amount of effort reaching out to ensure that we have the input from that very, very large group of people who it's probably difficult to get input from because they don't usually raise their hand. But they do make up, I would imagine, the vast majority of the residents of the city. So again, thanks, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Amato.
Thank you. My comments are kind of in the same vein as Councilmember Gamblin. Is that I think most people's experience with a vision statement is you spend a year, you you make one and then you ignore it. And I think in the documents in the packet, it's not made clear exactly the impact this vision statement truly has on the city and development regulations. And I think if that was spelled out, you know, quickly but cleanly, people might be willing to spend more time to do it. Because the the cover letter says they'd spend 10 minutes, but that doesn't include mailing it if they're, you know, having to do that. So just explaining the impact of this vision statement, I think, would be valuable. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Bresko.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of specific items about, this is in the survey, questions number 12, 13, and 14. And I I suggest that those be reviewed pretty carefully with an eye to, as I think Councilmember Odell mentioned, that there's some duplication. But I think there's some things missing. So I see access to commercial services that might or might not include restaurants or, you know, places to eat outside or things like that, that, you know, some members might or some residents may be interested in. And that's the same thing with, you know, what you least like. And then for question 14, because that, as I understand, it might start to fashion how we think about the vision statement. And it is a great list. I think it needs to be a little bit larger, again, like, you know, access to, you know, restaurants, for example. So those appear to me that they would really help the respondents fashion their thinking about what the vision should be. And and we should be careful not to omit some things that might be important to the community. And they just won't know or might not think about it. So that's my main comment. And then I would second the concerns about the breadth and the focus on the residents, or actually, maybe third or fourth. But I'll also say that as I read through some of the earlier parts of the documentation about measuring the success in the engagement toolbox, that it appeared to me that it was actually a pretty darn well thought out plan. You know, in terms of different ways of outreach, I felt fairly comfortable about that. So I'd say kudos to to your team, Christina.
Thank you.
I had originally seen Commissioner Karen Malcolm's hand up, and she put it down now. Karen, I just wanted to give you a quick chance here if you still had a question.
Well, I just would echo that I think most, I shouldn't say most, but there's a large group of residents who are totally disengaged with the city. They they have no idea how the government works. They're here to raise their family. They spend a lot of time working. And, you know, I was at, I've been going to soccer games for my grandchildren and just talking to parents on the sidelines, you know, they have really good ideas, but they they don't know how to participate and how to let their ideas be known. So I would suggest, you know, PTAs, yes, they are a connection to the the parents, but it's not a broad base of parents. Maybe a survey could go home in in the we we used to call them the brown envelope, where the information came home with the kids newsletter or whatever it might be. You know, maybe we could reach more of that population who are actually the people who are coming up. You know, like Pam said, the the students are coming up and they're they're the ones who are going to be living here. I think that, you know, that group of parents with kids, you know, they have something to say that they they would like to see in the city. And so I want to make sure that they're taken care of as well. Thank you.
And Christine, if I could ask a question to kind of round out the planning commission's questions here. Will you be, or maybe you should tell me that you shouldn't do this, giving any consideration to the fact that the survey is a snapshot in time? And this particular snapshot is during a fairly unique time? And so the pandemic could certainly influence people's comments about some of the things that that we may ask about. Have you given any consideration for that? Will you give any consideration for that? Or maybe you'll tell me we shouldn't give any consideration to that?
It's something that we're we're thinking a lot about, even just, even just informing our outreach strategy. For example, it's that looks very different than a non pandemic time. It'll, it's something that that we'll see how input, how how different input looks, how the results of our outreach looks. And and something that may get threaded into our recommendations or or may not, depending on what we're actually hearing from the community.
Thanks.
And I see Councilmember Odell has his hand up still, or again. Councilmember Odell, you are muted if you're speaking.
I want to thank Mike for his comments and everyone else on the planning commission as well. We have one thing on the questionnaire itself I forgot, and that is question 14, spread out over two pages. You want to try to avoid doing that if you can, so they can look at everything in context, both in hard copy and also electronically. Secondly, the the schools were mentioned specifically. And I need to point out that a significant percent of the students in the three high schools here, and probably particularly so in the case of Eastside Catholic, do not live in Samamish. So we may want to find a way to separate that out from everybody else if we can. Because I'm afraid you're going to get a biased answer if you have someone who's living in Bellevue answering questions about Samamish. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? We're a little bit over time. So I think we'll have to skip the activity this time. But if there are one or two other questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Okay, well, I think you can finish the rest of your presentation.
Oh, that was, that was it. All that's left is the activity. So before I, before I turn it back over to city staff, I just wanted to to point out that. So before I turn it back over to city staff, I just wanted to point out that some of you received some business cards this evening. These are project information cards. They've got a QR code and a URL to the project website. We encourage you to hand those out broadly to your networks. This is one way that we're hoping to help drive traffic to the site. That's where the survey link will be posted. That's where a lot of schedule information will be posted. So this is one way to help encourage really, really broad participation in the project. Those of you who didn't receive them this evening, there will be some cards mailed to your homes. So look for those. And then Miriam, I see your hand is up.
I was just going to add that our Sammamish youth board also got the same cards that you have or will be receiving. And we've asked them to help pass those out to their parents and their networks as well. Sarah and I will also be going to different locations throughout the city, like the YMCA, the library, other places, Starbucks, where we know people are, and trying to leave some of those and as well as some flyers that we're having made in a couple of weeks, too. So we're trying to reach as many people as possible and definitely could use your help doing that.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I'll hand it back to city staff. And thank you so much for your excellent questions and comments tonight.
Thank you. What a great presentation. David?
Yeah, Mayor, I think this time we can go ahead and close out the joint meeting and switch gears into the regular business meeting of the City Council.
Okay, Mark, did you have anything you wanted to wrap it up with?
Nothing other than to say thank you for the opportunity to do this together. I think it's valuable to occasionally, you know, be able to participate together and see everybody's faces on camera, at least, even if it's not in person, which I would prefer. But again, Mayor Moran and everybody else in the council, thanks for the opportunity for having the Planning Commission join you. And I hope in the fairly near future, we'll get to do this again in person, crossing my fingers. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, everybody, for joining us. And I don't want to have to repeat everything that Mr. Baughman said, but definitely, I would hope that maybe in the spring that we would get together and be able to all be in the same room. So thank you very much for joining this evening and for spending the time and the amount of hours that everybody does. So thank you, Planning Commission. You've done a wonderful job.
Thanks.
Okay, city, so that leads us on to our regular meeting. And I have a note here that came in. And so we're going to have to go back to, we're going to need to go back to our agenda. So we're going to go back to our approval of our agenda because we need to remove number 18. I've got a note here from Jeff, who is asking us to remove 18 for right now. He had a bunch of information and stuff that came in today that he needs to go through, and he's asking that we remove it from this meeting. And he'll put it back on a different meeting, so.
And what is 18, Madam Mayor?
No, 18 would be, 18 is the Discussion Framework for Interlocal Agreement between the Issaquah School District and the City of Sammamish.
Do you need a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes, so I'm looking for a motion to remove number 18. And then it looks like we are going to have from a note that I got in the chat box from Councilmember Odell. It looks that he was able to secure, going back to that, to secure an update. I don't know if I will take part in that update as I have not had, as I think there is others that have not had their second interviews. And so I find that to be probably not in the best interest of this going forward for us to be involved in that. So I will not, I will step out when that happens. So, anyway, but I guess there will be an update.
So I'll make a motion that we omit item 18. Did Jeff give you any indication as to when it would be?
You know, I didn't, he did not. And then we'll go back and read the note.
Because we can table it to a date certain.
It just says it will be rescheduled.
Okay, so my motion is to remove item 18 for this meeting and hope that it comes back at some point in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. We have a first, Andy, second. All those in favor, say aye.
You've got Chris.
Aye.
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 Oh, and hang on, so I apologize. We have a question from Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I guess I was, I have a question regarding the added executive session. And Mayor, you suggested you weren't going to attend, which I don't expect a report out from the investors, just more or less, what's the status from more, from a timeline, what is unfinished business and what's the schedule going forward so it can be wrapped up? I don't expect much more than that, so I don't see why anybody should recuse themselves from that discussion. Unless someone's thinking something different than I am.
I don't know. Okay, we'll see when we get in there. Okay, were you going to vote no on the motion to remove 18? I don't think so. You voted yes on that, did you?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the, with support from Councilmember Odell, that the update on the investigation be included in the first executive session.
I support that.
And I'd like to speak to that motion also to say that I didn't know there were going to be second interviews, so clearly you have more information than the rest of us. And yeah, it seems odd that anyone would exclude themselves from that. So, anyway, let's get that on the first executive session, please.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so it is on for the, so we've got first, any discussion on that? Here, no, not seeing any hands. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I believe that's six to one. Okay. And so we will be moving forward with the changes going forward. Now we're going to go to public comment. And pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the city council@samamish.us. Please join the Zoom meeting if you would like to give verbal public comment. Information on how to join is listed under Meeting Accessibility at the top of this agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Up to three, up to three minutes, oh, sorry about that. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Lena. I'll let you finish that.
If you wish to provide public comment tonight, please raise your hand. For those attendees who will be joined by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Thank you. I see that we have four people in attendance to provide public comment tonight. I will unmute the callers in the order that they have raised their hands. When it is your turn to speak, you will have, you'll be converted to a panelist and be unmuted and can turn on your webcam. Please note, during this conversion, it will feel like you have been removed from the meeting. Please wait a few seconds and you will return. You will have three minutes to provide public comment. Fifteen seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted and converted back to an attendee. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city that you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. Caller number one. Barbara Postumas.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is Barbara Postumas, and I'm Associate Superintendent of Business and Support Services for Lake Washington School District. I'm here representing my district along with Issaquah and Snoqualmie Valley school districts. My comments tonight are in regard to the council's upcoming agenda item related to school impact fee code amendments. The Lake Washington Issaquah Snoqualmie School District shared a joint letter on this topic with the Planning Commission on September 1st. We understand that the letter is included in your council materials this evening for your review. As we have communicated previously with city staff and city council, and most recently at your March 2021 meeting, we are not in support of the current proposal. We agree with and appreciate the council's desire that new residential development offset school capacity costs needed to serve that development. At the same time, we have shared with you our concerns regarding the proposal as applied to our calculated impact fees. Our boards of directors take seriously the balance between ensuring new growth pays for its fair share with maintaining the integrity and defensibility of the school impact fee program. We understand that some school districts may be comfortable with a factor of less or more than the 50% as applied to their fee and district-specific factors. However, our three districts have made a different determination based on facts specific to our particular districts and our capital facilities plans. Each of us have boundaries that cross cities and incorporated areas. Our elected boards of directors adopt capital facilities plans with an impact fee that is intended to be consistent across the district. Ultimately, we value our partnerships with our cities as we manage our shared obligations to our constituents. While we know that legally, school impact fees cannot be assessed to pay for all of new development impacts, we want to ensure that the impact fee program remains a useful tool for offsetting these impacts. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now unmute caller number two. We have Carrie B.
Hello, good evening, city council staff and public in attendance tonight. My name is Carrie Bosworth, and I'm a resident of Sammamish. I want to take a moment to talk about the BLUMA EIS study currently underway. My attendance at these meetings has become more consistent around that time. The study started in spring 2020, and I've watched the study progress since then. I wasn't looped in enough at the time to provide comment, but others were, and I don't necessarily see their feedback incorporated into the study. What I found interesting when reading the draft last month was how clear the scope and direction of the study was. However, throughout 2021, we were told that the city council had no input or access to the draft. So it's unclear who has been directing this for our community. This did not happen with a lack of direction as the purpose and intent were very clear. Who were the parties involved in setting the direction for the entire BLUMA EIS scope and its alternatives? I also found it interesting that at the last meeting, or the meeting on September 14th, a pre-recorded presentation was played at the council and that there was no Q and A. I haven't seen that before on other topics. Part of the benefit of tuning into these meetings is hearing the discussion around topics that result in time and money spent to manage a city. At the September 21st meeting, there was discussion of three road projects that triggered a lengthy discussion. That discussion went beyond those, and I felt it was a truly honest and frank conversation about bigger projects that have been sitting on the pages of our transportation plans for years. I would love to hear more discussion among the city council and public on this topic. These are big projects which need time, money, and honest review of impact, which is now documented in the study. I think there's an opportunity to get more engagement, as I've found the EIS study easy to consume and actually fascinating because it directly impacts my day-to-day life. Please consider the following. Pause and re-scope the EIS so that it includes the public comment, hold a public hearing, and have additional discussions about it and our transportation plans during those meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I will now unmute caller number three. Paul Stickney.
Good evening, city council. Paul Stickney here, Sammamish. I just want to cover a couple of high points from the email that I sent in today. I agree that the BLUMA EIS should be either paused or expanded in scope to consider optimizing alternatives as another option compared to the three current action alternatives. Provided five PDFs today in support of that. Then I've got a couple of topics to talk about, I'd like to share. I believe Sammamish has been misdeveloped, not overdeveloped. And what that is, is that's adding up that relatively speaking to the internal economic and demographic makeup of our community over a cycle of life and a seven-generation approach, I believe our community is overdeveloped with larger single-family homes, but it is underdeveloped with different diverse and smaller housing and services. I think it's time to bring those things into balance. The other thing I'd like to talk about are numbers that are known and numbers that are unknown across all comprehensive planning in our city over time. We know our growth target, we know our job target, and we know our town center numbers. And by the way, optimizing calls for as low a growth target as possible, so good job. What we do not know, though, is a full zoned and regulatory capacity to build out across the board. We do not know, unknown, are our surplus and shortage housing gaps for all income levels, all income levels, over a lifetime? And what our needs are for affordable housing at 80% AMI and under, and for housing affordability at 80% and over. So I'll close with my closing paragraph, if I have time. I assert optimizing land uses to alleviate longstanding internal housing imbalances now and over time is the most favorable growth solution for our community. Modestly optimizing internal housing supplies and local services with community needs and wants hits the nail on the head. Doing this will enable added assets with appropriate benefits in holistic and sustainable ways that are far greater for residents in the city than they are for development interests. Appreciate the time, having the opportunity to speak tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now unmute caller number four.
Hi, my name's Mary Wichter. I've lived in Sammamish 21 years. Couple things on the community visioning or the vision statement. I believe there's been at least three that Sammamish had has, and I saw the development of the 2015 one happen at city meetings. I think it would be useful to have those former ones for people to look at or refer to if they don't know what it is or would like some guidance from the past and see how it's changed. Second, on the Lewis Thompson Tight Line update, which is scheduled for tonight, a lot of information on problems and feedback and input from the public is included in the ZACU Basin Plan, which is over 250 pages. And I hope that the city staff and the consultants will make sure that those are looked at. Plus, there's some things that didn't make it in there, and there's also new people that live in the area. So I hope that staff will get council's direction and blessing to be able to work with people so that we get that project, so it covers the things that it needs to. with people so that we get that project, so it covers the things that it needs to. And then mostly, I wanted to talk on the dockets. The text amendments that are submitted, if you even want one line of code or one word changed, you have to submit a text amendment, which it's been a pretty complicated process. It took three years just to get a legend put on a map that was in the comp plan, but it's getting easier because city staff's really been trying to work on, and there's new adopted code, which is in Title 24A of the Samamish Municipal Code. But when there are things going on, a person doesn't know when they're coming up or what will be on the work plan. So the only thing you do is you have to blindly put them into the docket process, which is online, and it's not the first Friday, but the first Monday of August is the cutoff. And when we were changing the process and updating it with staff a couple years ago, I said, can't you just make it so people, like, if they think of something at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, they can do it? So you can enter a docket request at any time if people are willing to do that. I would like to see the process and at least the options for comment once the dockets are submitted. That should be broadcast a little bit more, because I actually barely knew about it myself and didn't see any comments from this year. Just a couple things on the, so the four dockets I submitted, I just did different topics, and they're actually pretty small. Like, the first one's just on clearing and grading. Are we going to abide by CEPA limits and have lifetime limits or 100 cubic yard maximums? And whatever you do, critical areas need lower thresholds. That last part is being worked on, Development Reg, Phase 2, but I don't know if the rest of it's going to be, so I had to submit it as a docket, but I really believe it could be put in. And also just the definition of fulfill. We don't want people to use fill, using rubber tires or things, or using like a large amount of vegetation that would create a void or kind of like a tiger trap. So our fill definition in our code just isn't as strong as it is other places. So it's like a one-line thing, but you have to submit a docket to do it. So even though there's four dockets submitted, I tried to put them under different topics. And if you read the email that I sent, it describes more, with a little bit more background, why I submitted them. So I hope you'll give them full consideration. It is hard to get code changes in, but they're needed, because when there aren't regulations, you can't get what needs to get done done. Thanks.
Thank you.
That is all the callers we have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you to all the callers that called in this evening. And the next, we have executive session, and that is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. And Tom, do you have the second one? It will be RCW 42.30.1101, and... Is it F? I believe, yep, it's F. Perfect. Okay, I'm going to guess that that is going to take us probably, I'm going to say 45 minutes. So it's 8 o'clock now, and then...
Madam Mayor, can we have a five-minute break before the executive session as well?
Yes, I was going to say we're going to need a health and safety break. So let's say, let's be back here at 8:50. 8:50, 5:0.
So we're 20, 25 minutes behind schedule?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
This is the city council meeting, and today's date is Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. And we are extending executive session from 9 o'clock till 9:30 PM. Again, extending executive session from 9:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Thank you. This is the city council meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and our executive session will be extended. Again, this is a city council meeting for October 5th, 2021, and our executive session will be extended until 10:00 PM. Again, till 10:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, I think I see just about everybody back. Okay, I think I see Deputy Mayor. I do not see Councilmember Stewart. Let's give her just a minute. And Councilmember Gamblin. Up, I see Councilmember Gamblin. Okay, council, let's, let's get back on this. The next thing up is our consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'd like to pull an item.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, what item would you like to pull?
Number eight, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Eight.
Number eight. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so... We have a motion to approve the consent calendar, less number eight. Did I have a second on that? Oh. I need a second on that?
A second on...
Second.
Chris Ross. Okay. So we have first, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Okay, so we're going to take number eight, we're going to move it. Where are we going to move it?
Unfinished business.
Okay, let's just put it... Let's put it on unfinished business.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, did I miss the consent agenda?
That's what we're on right now.
Can I pull item number four, please?
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, and we are pulling items number four and number eight. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Perfect. Okay. So... Do you got that? Okay, excellent. Okay, next up, we've got presentations, proclamations. We've got three of them this evening. We've got, actually, we've got two proclamations. We've got one for Domestic Violence Action Month, and then we've got one for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So Domestic Violence Action Month, do I have somebody, any council member who wants to read that one?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Trine, and then Deputy Mayor, did you want to read the Breast Cancer Awareness Month?
I don't think I can get through that one without some tears here or something.
Okay.
I'll take that one, there.
Okay.
Put it on your behalf, Kristi.
Thanks.
Okay.
So, Samamish/Washington Proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2021. Everyone Knows Someone. In the city of Samamish, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, victim service programs, or victim services providing, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by LifeAware and other community organizations to work towards the elimination of intimate partner violence. Whereas in just one day across the US and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters, that same day, more than 9,000 requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be provided because programs lack the resources to meet the victims' needs. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community and throughout the United States and the world. And whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. And whereas the need for safe house continues to be rated as survivor's most urgent need. And whereas Samamish joins others across Washington and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Samamish. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and the power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each whose "everyone knows someone" adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Now, therefore, we, the council of the city of Samamish, on behalf of all the residents hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If you see something, say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trine. The next thing we have, it's also, hits a lot of people and a lot of families. I know it hits our Deputy Mayor, my sister, and it hits a lot of families, and it hits them hard. So Councilmember Stewart, please read this one. Oh, Councilmember, you're on mute.
There we go. Sorry about that. Whereas a woman receives a diagnosis of breast cancer every two minutes, making this disease the most frequently diagnosed cancer among women in the US other than skin cancers. And whereas about 40,000 women and 500 men are expected to die from breast cancer annually in the United States. And whereas, through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including increase in five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer from 74% to 98%. And whereas 2.5 million breast cancer survivors living in the US today are a testament to courage, as well as to the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. And whereas screening rates are declining, and a recent study reveals that among 1.5 million studied over age 40 with health insurance, less than 50% receive the recommended annual screening. And whereas various organizations are spreading breast cancer awareness to both women and men through outreach, education, and screening programs, and have empowered women with a life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms. And the city of Samamish would like to support and encourage these ongoing efforts on behalf of our citizens. And whereas throughout the month of October, women are encouraged to make a renewed commitment to following recommended screening guidelines and to make a mammogram appointment. And whereas throughout October, organizations and health practitioners in the city are encouraged to use this opportunity to promote awareness about breast cancer and proper breast health, and to encourage annual mammograms. And whereas public officials and citizens of the city are urged to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs that encourage annual mammograms. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of Samamish do hereby proclaim October 2021 Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Samamish. So please, please mask up and get vaccinated so that people can go to the hospital and get their, their checkups. And let's, let's see if we can't get all women free mammograms, whether they have health insurance or not, so that everybody can have early detection and treatment.
Yeah, that's...
Maybe that's something we could sponsor, some free mammograms in Samamish. What do you say, guys?
Yeah, actually, they have a mobile that comes to Samamish, so yes, everybody should get one.
When's it coming?
Well, yeah, I was going to say that mammograms are a part of every healthcare program, and since healthcare is now mandated, everyone gets a mammogram, and it's not, you don't pay a deductible on it, I don't believe, so everybody gets one.
Yep, and please get them, very important. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stewart, for reading that. And next, next up, we have a presentation on the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line update, and that is Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and Deputy City Manager. Tonight, we're before you to give a presentation on Lewis Thompson Tight Line. This project received legislative funding in its last go-around, as it was one of the city's top priorities in seeking outside resources to improve a vitally needed stormwater improvement. Tonight, there aren't decisions to be made. We'll be back before council through the mid-Gianian budget ask and a few other steps before we get into the formal design. But tonight is to give you a presentation, update you on where the project last left off, where we think we're headed with it, and what our next steps will be. Our presenter tonight will be Ben Wrestler, Associate Engineer in our CIP group. We'll have Toby Conan and Audrey Starcy available for questions. So I'd like to turn it over to Ben for the presentation. Ben?
I'm here, sorry. Thank you, council members and mayor. I'm here to talk tonight about the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line. I'm Ben Wrestler, Associate Engineer and Project Manager. The Lewis Thompson Tight Line...
Are you sharing your screen?
What was that?
Are you sharing your screen for the presentation?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It is sharing. The Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line project was first discussed during the overview of the ZACU Basin Plan in the summer of 2019, and was last discussed with city council in November of last year, when the project was approved as 2021 legislative priority. So this presentation will be an overview and introduction of sorts of the project, including the planning level costs and the project timeline going forward. So the Lewis Thompson Tight Line project was identified as the top project in ZACU Basin Plan that was adopted by city council in 2019. The project is still in its infancy, in no additional design or planning outside the ZACU Basin's conceptual design developments. Roughly the 10% project planning has been completed on this project. Lewis Thompson Road is a two-lane collector arterial with ditches on the east side and an unimproved slope that leads to ZACU's Creek on the west side. Stormwater currently runs undetained and untreated. From ditches, crosses Lewis Thompson through a series of culverts, and outfalls into ZACU's Creek, which is one of four remaining streams where native lakes Mamish Coconee Salmon have been observed. During periods of heavy rain, current culverts reach capacity, causing water flow across the street, which is, has caused erosion, and in the winter, freezing situations. So this project is intended to mitigate flood and landslide hazards by upgrading the ditch and culvert system for up to 0.61 miles of Lewis Thompson Road to a curb, gutter, and storm sewer system. Upgrading the system would increase capacity, reduce maintenance costs, improve water quality prior to flowing into Lake Samamish, install flow control facilities... install flow control facilities, reduce erosion from the existing ditches on the east side and below the outfalls on the west side, install stubs for future stormwater improvements at intersecting streets, accommodate for future road improvements and future development, and non-motorized improvements could be included if City Council likes. So the Zakuus Basin broke this plan out into three different schedules. Schedule A is the baseline or the main improvement, which would install a storm sewer system from two oh fifth Avenue Northeast to two tenth Avenue Northeast. Two tenth Avenue Northeast is a known prolonged maintenance problem area along the corridor due to a lack of upstream drainage improvements. So the project lengths pretty much extend from the entrance to Tlingit south into the Tamarack. Schedule B would include extending that out to the limits of the Lewis Thompson Road slide repair and drainage improvements from twenty eighteen. And so this Schedule B is green on the map, and Schedule A is purple. Schedule C is the non-motorized portion, including sidewalks and bike lanes. So on this screen is a table showing the preliminary planning level project estimates completed in the Zakuus Basin Plan. There is an inflation factor of nine point six percent over the original twenty eighteen report funding levels, and this was based on the Engineering News Record, E N R, Construction Cost Index for Seattle between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one. Again, this is a very baseline ten percent rough planning level estimate, and costs will be reevaluated and re-presented as part of the first planning element with a design consultant. So this table breaks down the cost by phase and schedule. The column on the right summarizes the total project if all three phases of the schedule are decided upon, and then each individual schedule total is summarized at the bottom. The city has already received two outside funding sources for this project. Last week, we officially received confirmation that this project is in the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three state capital budget with a direct appropriation of three million dollars for the tight line. This is through the state's Department of Commerce, and more specifically, the state's coronavirus state physical recovery fund and Federal American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Three percent of that three million does go to administrative costs for the Department of Commerce, so our usable appropriation is two point nine one million. We just found out about this last week, so we're still in the process of receiving the final details, other requirements and stipulations for the funding. Additionally, we've received four hundred thousand dollars through the King County Flood Control District for design on this project. Both funding sources were applied for with the tight line scope of A. Schedule A, so two oh fifth Avenue Northeast to two tenth Avenue Northeast. Non-motorized improvements were not included when we applied for this grant. In light of receiving the outside funding, during the mid-biennium budget process, staff will be requesting additional eight hundred and fifty thousand for planning and design, and then one point four seven six million for land acquisition. This project currently is not funded, so the, so the request would allow staff to begin the process of acquiring right away and begin planning and design, planning and design in the second half of this current biennium cycle with the goal of starting construction in twenty twenty-three. The project would be funded through the stormwater capital funding, but Schedule C improvement staff would request that those, the non-motorized portion, be paid for with general funds. And then it's good to note that the stormwater utility rates are being reevaluated in the first half of twenty twenty-two during the road study. Okay, so the, so the project timeline. Like I just said, we, we just found out last week about the appropriation, and we found out that the timeline has been extended through twenty twenty-six. Originally, we were working on information that the funds had to be spent, the three million had to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four, which was a very tight timeline, so we have two additional years. That said, we are in the process of soliciting a design consultant right now and are aiming to have a consulting contract for planning and design for City Council at the December seventh council meeting. Their first task would be to reexamine the estimates of the schedules and re-present that information to City Council for approval on the final design scope. And this meeting is expected in late winter, early spring in twenty twenty-two. Design is expected to span all of twenty twenty-two with construction starting in twenty twenty-three. And with our current schedule, it would be closed up by the end of twenty twenty-four. But as mentioned, there are two additional years afloat within our schedule, so there is additional time for staff to go after additional funding sources, additional grants. So to summarize the next steps, there will be the mid-biennium budget request asked in November, the design and planning contract in December, and then we will re-present this information in March, try to solidify the project. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna have probably lots of questions. Oh, yeah, here we go. Okay, Councilmember Ross, followed by Councilmember Odell, and Councilmember Trine.
Ben, can you go back to the funding page? Thank you. The one point four seven six from land acquisition, is that after we're funded for the Parker acquisition? I want to make, are they crossing paths? Do we have any available? Because I thought Parker fully exhausted the land acquisition funds available.
Jeff, can you help me with that?
Yeah, I, I don't have knowledge of the Parker acquisition. Is this, can you help me with that, Chris?
The, what we talked about last week? And, and, was it?
It's Parks money, Chris, so it might be different.
Yeah, okay, that, okay, okay. This is Park land, or land acquisition in general, and we did use Parks funds for land acquisition as well, which was the last week's discussion. So my question is, is there anything left after last week's transaction? And is this, does this need to be adjusted, and do we need to find a new source of funds?
At the moment, I'm not familiar with the details of the Parks buckets of money and how much was left over. The one point four six could come out of the grants that we've obtained and/or the storm utility going forward.
This is not the set aside land acquisition funds that we-
No.
I got, okay, thanks for the clarification.
Sorry about it. If I looked confused, I wasn't clear about that as well, but-
Okay, that, no, that helps. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Jeff, what's the, or maybe Ben, I should address Ben, really? What's the distance between the start and the end of this project?
So if you did the entire scope, it would be from two oh fifth Avenue Northeast to two tenth place southeast, and that's Schedule A and B, and that's point six one miles.
Point six one miles, okay. Could you go back to the timeline for a minute?
Yep.
This is Zakuus Creek we're dealing with here, which is a very important Kocany stream. And I think it's important that we end construction, at least of anything that's gonna move dirt, well before the beginning of October twenty twenty-four. I'd hate to have a whole lot of mud show up in the stream at the wrong moment, in the middle of the first Kocany spawning surge. So if we can start construction a bit earlier, it'd be nice. Or find a way to tighten it up. On the, the reason I asked the first question, though, was the, well, let me go back to, let me go back to Chris Ross's question before. Is the land acquisition cost there? No, never mind. I'm mixing apples and oranges. The point six one miles is likely to be representing fundamentally about three million dollars a mile for pedestrian improvements. Am I, is my math right on that? It seems awfully expensive. If you go back to the cost chart, the first one. So with, if you look at Schedule C, two point three million. Actually, it's more than that. Divide two point three by point six one. Just to escalate, you're up around four million for that sidewalk. Is that expensive?
It is, and probably some of the drivers associated with this have to do with the types of expansion of the roadway to accommodate the pedestrian improvements, including walls and unique features not, you know, not typically anticipated on a, on a typical roadway. And it is one of the reasons that we want to, as a first scope of work, to go back, reassess, and refine Schedule A, B, and C's cost estimates, and bring those back before council with today's dollars, today's issues, and help us to weave the needle, if you will, on this project.
I really do feel that we do need pedestrian capability in this, on this particular road, because for a lot of the neighborhoods, it's their only way downhill. So that, I, I believe that to be important, but I think we should maybe sharpen our pencil on that a bit.
And one of the things we'll have an opportunity in two thousand and twenty-two is to go through and do an updated Transportation Capital Improvement Plan as well, which this project could receive, if so chosen by the council at that time, additional local monies, as well as, we desire to explore grant funding opportunities for sidewalk type projects. And with the extended tight line, it might be advantageous that we find additional money as well.
Okay. Not opposed, we just need to know what we're getting into. Thank you.
Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I guess Jeff and Ben, if it was, it was, if it was easy, it would already be done. So I'm looking at this project, and it's like, wow, you're doing, thank you, Tom, Councilmember Odell, point six one miles of improvement, and you're going from, I would say, closer to three hundred and fifty feet to down to fifty feet, so you have three hundred feet of elevation descent, or gain, depending on if I'm going up the hill or down the hill. So what we're talking about here is a steep slope landslide hazardous area that we're working in. We have an existing road, and in that existing road, we're, we're talking about putting in stormwater facilities that would then handle the water to help protect Zakuus Creek and to help the basin, to protect the basin, which in turn protects the lake. And also, as most of my fellow council members know, we would be also working to protect the Kocany Salmon. With all that being said, I, I begin to start looking at the cost for this, and I start to think to myself, is there a better, I start to think like Henry Ford. Is there a better way? So the question to you, Jeff and Ben, tonight, on a high level, have we considered doing something at the top of this project to control water or to, to mitigate for the amount of water that's flowing downhill and catching it at the top of the hill versus a, a series of what I would consider, what are they, vaults and tight lines to manage the, the stormwater? Have we considered getting creative, and have we considered other options besides a vaults and a tight line?
Let me take a stab at that. Over the last six months or so, maybe even a little bit before that, this issue rose to me, coming on as a new Public Works Director, and looking at the possibility of what other solutions and opportunities might exist. There has been some analysis and studies done from seventeen through nineteen in the Tamarack Basin, looking at creative and different options and alternatives. The challenge is, is Tamarack is all a private neighborhood, all the streets are private, all the land in there is private as opposed to public streets. So it became, it becomes a challenge as to where and how you, you control the water within the basin, within public right of way, if you can, before you have to go and condemn either for easements and/or other things. We, as staff, did meet with a handful of folks in the neighborhood, we had very fruitful conversations, very, very passionate conversations. It's a complex issue to deal with in trying to control it at the upstream end when we, when there's so many factors and issues to deal with. What we did come away with is letters of support from neighbors plus a petition that the tight line project is a good project to go forward with, and that was support from the neighborhood. In terms of new and creative ideas, we have not gone back and explored anything beyond what we're showing you here tonight or what I've articulated here at the moment.
Thank you for your honesty, Jeff. I really do appreciate that. I, I think as a council, we might want to just, I, I just throw a little caution out there and, and concern that with the price tag that's being presented here, we might want, I mean, I'm not saying to the point where I want to pause this completely, but I'm looking at the map, and it's clearly there are, are projects for stormwater that are on the, what, what would be the south side of this project, and nothing on the north side of the lake, or, I mean, of the creek. And so there, there just, to me, seems like there might be something that we could do as a city that would change the scope of the, or the, the intensity of ripping up the, and Jeff, maybe I'm wrong here, but ripping up the roadway and putting down tight line and vaults, which has a cost in the future to the residents, the taxpayers, in the future, that we may not exactly know what those are. So I, I just throw that out there as something to just think about, consider. And then on top of that, Jeff and Ben, I just apologize that I didn't get this question to you earlier in the week as far as my concerns and, and some of my thoughts. So what I'd like to do is just put those together for you and send those in an email at this point. I have a couple of other concerns, too, with the basin plan, and how we could move forwards as, maybe at a lesser cost. Thank you for your time.
And just to close on that, we do have the opportunity to come back and get council's approval on the scoping for the project. And so it, it isn't, it isn't just here, we're, we're today, and we'll come back when we're ready to go to construction. We have a new mantra of coming back early and often on a variety of issues through the course of the project. So some of these ideas can gain traction through the scoping process as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Back to you, Mayor.
Council, we need to extend our meeting. Okay, so I think that's-
Is that enough?
No, that's not gonna get us very far, but it'll get us to eleven.
On top of that, that was to eleven thirty.
I, I will move, I will go for eleven thirty.
I'll withdraw my motion of eleven.
So move to extend to eleven thirty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to extend to eleven thirty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, next up, I believe we have Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I want to thank staff very much. Obviously, if you guys can find a, you know, a more efficient and effective way to do the work, we should always do that. That being said, we put this on our legislative priorities, we got money for it. We need to be very careful as a city that we don't go and ask for money, get allocated money, and then not- money, and then not do the projects. If we start to get a reputation for that, we are no longer going to get money. This project, as you identified, hits on a number of things. It's a public safety issue, it's an environmental issue, and we know that this road has had problems before, and when they weren't properly addressed, we had to take emergency measures, which always costs more. And again, I will advise you that, you know, Mary Victor, she does her homework, she's incredibly thorough, incredibly smart, she's been working on this longer than probably anybody in the city at this point who's left. So this is an important project, it needs to get done, it needs to get done sooner rather than later, because the cost of not doing it eventually will be a whole lot more. So thanks for this, keep up the great work, and let's get it done.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart.
And then my input is, one, I want to say basically the same thing that Councilmember Stewart said. You know what, we've been given money, and I say that again, through the group, through the Flood District. If we're going to ask for the money, we're going to get the money, we need to use the money. And if that means we need to break this down into little bits, then that's what we need to do. But we need to utilize the funding and break it down into sections and do bit by bit. And, you know, if it comes down to, you know, we can't put in, you know, you know, we can only put in sidewalk on one side, whatever, then that's what we need to do. But we need to get this done, and we need to move forward, forward on these projects, and we need to figure out what is the highest priority, and we need to, we need to get going on these. It's, it's been too long, and this is a project that I think, clearly, it's, it's been on the priority list, and we've gotten funding for it, so I think we need to go on it. So that's my input. And next is Councilmember Odell.
Sorry, I'm fumbling two different voices here. I want to echo what the mayor just said, and also Councilmember Stewart. One question for Jeff, for staff. It was an indication we may be ripping up the road. I don't believe that is the intent here, is it, Jeff? Existing road?
The, the ideal location is along the shoulder ditch line, so to speak. Ben or Toby, do you want to confirm that, since you're closer to the project?
Yeah, it would go in as much as possible, along where the existing ditch is. It is a storm, so we'd have to go point to point, so there might be a little bit of dina through the road, but the purpose, from the 10% conceptual design, is that it would go where the existing ditch is.
Okay, that's, that was my understanding of the beginning, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands.
If that's the case, we'll be back, as we stated in the bullets there, and I look forward to your continued support. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that takes care of our presentations and proclamations, and we're going to go back to unfinished business. And we have two items that were from the consent calendar. Let's start with number four. And Councilmember Stewart, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. I have two questions. The first one is the big refund to Ichijo. What is that for? And if I recall correctly, this is the second big refund we've given to Ichijo, so it'd be really interesting to find out why we're giving them money back. It's $560,000 this time.
Do we have anybody who can answer that for us?
Councilmember Stewart, I don't have the answer for you right at the moment, I'm going to have to circle back with staff. I don't believe we have anyone from Finance on the, on the line tonight, so I'll have to circle back with staff, and we'll have to get you that answer.
Okay, and then the second one is a little more complicated, a little more sticky. It's the, it's the check to Aglick and Widded. Last time, we approved additional funding, but if you go back and you look at, at the billings, as I can tell, we knew we were past budget. Well, first of all, we've overspent the amount of money we've allocated several times before asking for more money. And this most recent time, we knew we had spent all of the money in mid-July. So before we keep just writing checks, I want to understand how it is that we aren't keeping track of how much we're spending, and we're overspending what council approves repeatedly, and then coming and asking for the money after the fact, and then the money that we approve is effectively already spent. So I think we need to understand that before we just keep writing checks. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't approve things, but I'm concerned that, again, we are, you know, staff is coming and asking for money, we're approving a certain amount of money, and then you're overspending it, and you're just assuming you can come back and ask us after the fact. That's not the point of us approving money, right? So can anyone speak to that? This time, like I said, we approved $100,000 on July 6th, and a week later, we had already spent $27,000 beyond that $100,000. And there was not a request made to council for more money until September 7th. And of that $250,000 that was approved again on September 7th, we only have $68,000 of that left.
Excuse me, Councilmember, I appreciate the question. Again, I apologize, I don't have anyone here that can answer that right off the top. The city attorney wasn't feeling well and dropped out of the meeting tonight, so we will have to get you answers to those questions back to council.
Because I do have more questions on the legality of staff being able to spend beyond the allocated budget on a repeated basis. That, it's not how I understand how this works. So I, I am not comfortable approving more checks being written to anybody at this point, until someone can tell me how we're keeping track of this, and making sure that, that we are not spending beyond what's been approved, and just assuming the council will approve it and backcharge it.
Thank you, Councilmember. If I may, I believe David Pyle has potentially some answers to the first question that you raised, if that's okay, acceptable with the council. David?
Yeah, thank you. So just listening, listening in the background, and I pinged Lita, and she elevated me to a panelist, so here I am to explain the Ichijo issue. So what this is, is when the Ichijo project was approved for permit, they put down a cash deposit in, in the amount that's in front of you for release tonight, for $559,000. Someone is not muted, so I'd ask that everyone could mute their microphones. Thank you, I was getting a lot of feedback. So the, the Ichijo project, when it was permitted for construction, put down a cash deposit with the city for a performance bond equal to $559,179. They have since met the performance obligations for that cash bond. It was inspected by Public Works, and Public Works processed the paperwork to have that bond released. They do have a maintenance and defect bond in place now that replaces the performance bond. So at this point in time, the release of this money is due to their completion of the project, to the satisfaction of the city's inspectors, and per the contract that was in place between the city and the builder.
Thanks, David. And did we give them a big refund for something previously, or am I imagining that?
I'm not familiar with that. I could, I could try and mine the records up, see if there were any prior releases. I do know that this one did circulate through our office a few weeks ago, September 2nd is when it was received, the, the release request was received by the builder, and we did process the, the release, which was approved on September 13th, and has now made its way through Finance to the council.
Okay, thanks, David, I appreciate that, that makes sense.
Sure. Thank you.
And Deputy City Manager, perhaps what we can do for number eight is, it'd be best if we had a ledger showing that, you know, where we are within budget for the year, and so that we can see then each transaction. Because there's a couple of questions here, is, you know, we're approving it, and we're improving it in increments, but we're staying within the annual budget. And so there's a couple of questions that need to be answered there.
Mayor, we'd be happy to do that, we will get that, we'll get that started tomorrow, and get that out to council as soon as possible.
Councilmember Stewart, might I suggest that you offer up to table the approval of this item to the following week, so that staff has the opportunity to get your answers?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, that is a fabulous idea.
Well, I was gonna, yeah, so I was going to say that we pass the rest and table the one.
Well, we still have number eight to deal with, we're on four.
Yeah, so I move that we table the, the check Aglick and Widded until next week.
Second.
And that way, we don't hold up any of the other financial transactions.
Second.
Okay, so they're saying that this may be a record, so this, this may be that the checks have already gone, so what we're seeing is a record? So what we're asking may not be able to happen? So Councilmember Odell, I see you have a question?
Well, basically, I was talking about the same thing, and I wonder if Deputy City Manager can enlighten us on that little issue?
Councilmember, I apologize, but I am not up to speed on the specifics of this one, so...
Well, very, very simply, Mr. Deputy City Manager, are all these bills history, or are these checks waiting to be mailed?
I, I would, these are, have to be waiting to be mailed, because they, I don't believe they can be mailed without council approval, so...
If that is the case, then we can do what Councilmember Stewart suggests.
I don't see...
So again, let's go back to the motion to the panelists.
Okay. Okay.
Can we eat the motion on the four, please?
The motion is to table the check of $112,024.89 to Aglick and Widded until next week.
Thank you.
And allow the remainder of the transactions to be approved, assuming there are no other questions.
In the interim, we'll expect a analysis from staff on where we are with this particular account.
And that was already seconded as well.
Yes, it was.
Well-questioned.
Okay, is there any discussion? Apparently, we're calling the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we're going to need to get information...
I'd also like to request on these legal fees, sorry, on these legal fees, I really want to see, you know, and Chris, I think this will speak to you, that we kind of see the running total, right?
Well, that's what I asked for, is a full accounting of this account for this year, so we should see a full ledger of it.
Yeah, so we can see every time we've spent beyond what was approved, and how many weeks that went by before council was brought in to say, hey, we've already gone negative, and now we're going to ask you for money, and that money's already spent.
If that's what happened, yeah.
Okay, so going on to the next item, since we've taken care of number four, number eight, and that was Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I find this item, it's almost perplexing a little bit as to why it's a consent item or an agenda bill at all. I know that the agenda bill specifies that this is within the city manager's signing authority, because it's only $6,000, but it's, you know, because, as the agenda bill states, that process wasn't followed. These traffic wraps that have gone through the, our Arts Commission have most certainly been well-received by our community, and I, I'm recognizing that there is clearly some type of communication gap that is going on between Arts Commission and staff. I don't know why, it seems to be this kind of perpetual issue that probably needs some resolution outside of this agenda bill. But one thing that is highlighted in this agenda bill, which is, you know, we've spent, I think, what is it, like some $68,000 thus far to do these very elaborate traffic wraps that are very historical, and kind of tell the story of how Smamish even came to be. Most of these traffic boxes that are wrapped tell a story that existed beyond, or at least prior to our incorporation, well, prior to our incorporation. And we have this table in here that kind of goes through, that we're changing out some of our boxes. So the, the reason I pull this, and I bring this up, is that we have had, I think, 29 boxes wrapped, and of those, we're planning to replace 26 of them. That gives me some heartburn on a couple of different levels. One, that we've spent $68,000 wrapping them, and two, that this has truly been a labor of love for our Arts Commission, and one particular Arts Commissioner who has spent unfathomable hours conceiving these, putting them together. Ivan drove by this summer and stopped, and that Commissioner was on the spot with a company that was wrapping the boxes. And it's, I mean, I think we've just got to have a better work plan, as far as, if we're planning to replace boxes, we should not be wrapping them. My understanding is that we had an agreement that we weren't going to replace any boxes for two years after they were wrapped, and then that's not been the case. We're replacing boxes well before two years. And considering the money that we're spending on these boxes, we can't just go and rewrap new boxes, because the utility boxes are not the exact same size, so you can't just have this, the company reprint them and slap them on these boxes, that's not the way it works. So we're undoing some very good work every time we replace a box, and I'm just concerned that we're, we have an agenda bill before us for, you know, $6,800, that is well within the signing authority, but what's highlighted here is kind of this misstep that we seem to have with boxes we're wrapping, and those that we're replacing, and I'm not sure how we go about fixing that problem, but it's a problem that we need to remedy, and it seems to be a communication error. I don't know how we resolve it, but it needs resolving.
And Anjali, I see that you've joined us, did you want to respond?
Sure, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. I, as Deputy Mayor pointed out, these have been replaced. It is our understanding that this has been communicated from Public Works to the Commissioner, to the best of their knowledge. That said, we've had a turnover in staff in Public Works, so I hate to put Jeff on the spot, but, you know, if you can promote him to a panelist, if he wants to add anything, he's welcome to do so. There has been a delay in some of the last few wraps going in, so, I mean, if you count from when the first contract was signed, we are three years into it, and I think the Commissioner was made aware that some of... those boxes could be replaced in two years. So the two-year time span has been passed. A lot of those boxes have been in place since 2000 and 2001, so, you know, keeping up with public work standards, they do have to be replaced. I agree, we have received positive feedback from the community. It is a really well-received project. I don't think there's any doubt in that. So I don't know what else to say in that, to the best of staff's ability, it has been communicated when these boxes were, would be replaced. As for the reason that it is on the agenda bill is because staff was presented with a contract to sign. The contract was put together after the work was done. This is not the $61,000 that council approved and that the Arts Commission had also approved. It's my understanding that this replacement work, there are desired funds allocated, but then the typical process is at a Arts Commission meeting, those funds get voted into the budget, authorized by the Commission, and then they, then a contract is typically put together and signed by the city before the work is done. So this one was done slightly out of order. There was, the consultant happened to be in the area, so that makes sense, and there was no regular meeting. So I don't think it was for any other reason as it puts staff in an awkward spot to sign a contract at the end of July for work that is noted clearly in the contract done on the 14th of June. So we were advised by both the Finance Department and by legal to, just for transparency, to make sure that council is aware. So staff is not authorizing work after it is done. So it was purely for transparency that it was put on the agenda. And Scott, if you would like to add to that as well, feel free to do so.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Anjali. And, and also, I think Jeff can speak to the connection with the replacement schedule for the actual traffic wraps. I think this is, just like Anjali said, this is a matter of transparency. We want to make sure that we all know that there's no, I don't think there was any intent to do the wrong thing. I think everybody wanted to do the right thing here. We just want to make sure that we are understanding that we are approving a contract after the fact and, and issuing payment to a contractor who has already done the work. And we just want to make sure that we are transparent and really clear about that aspect, and so that we can move forward and then issue payment to that contractor.
So, I mean, I can appreciate that, but knowing that the city manager's signing authority, council changed that. It used to be 25,000, now it's 50, and you're bringing $6,800 to us. That perplexes me, because if that's the case, then everything that's $6,800 and above should be coming to council, but it's not. And so I, you know, I, I think, I, I don't know what the communication gap is. I can identify it in this agenda bill, that there is a communication gap that needs to probably be remedied on one front or another, the primary being the fact that we're spending money, council's approving, you know, giving money to the Arts Commission. The Arts Commission is approving doing these wraps, and we've wrapped a bunch of traffic boxes that we're replacing. Like I said, we have 29 of them, and 26 are being replaced. That is a colossal waste of taxpayer dollars, and it's a waste of our volunteers' time. And if we want to be able to encourage more volunteers in our city to volunteer for these jobs that are largely thankless and they're not paid anything, then I think bringing agenda bills that are $6,800 to council to approve that kind of airs out, you know, some of the dirty laundry behind the scenes is not going to encourage our volunteers to want to step forward. But my main point in bringing this up and pulling it off consent is that if we have a schedule to, which apparently we do now, and I don't know if that was communicated to our Arts Commission or not, but there's a communication gap if we're replacing most of the boxes that we just finished wrapping. I just want to be sure that as we move forward, because the community does value these historical references across the city, that the boxes that we're wrapping are not slated for replacement within whatever this timeframe is. I think it goes up to, you know, the anticipated replacement of 2024 to 2027. So none of the boxes that we are, you know, slated to repair in, you know, the, the near future should be wrapped, and apparently, most of them are. So we're going to tear out all those boxes that we wrapped, which is really unfortunate.
Appreciate that, Deputy Mayor. Jeff, if you would, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to just ask Jeff to talk about the schedule, because after this issue came up, we did internally get together and, and connect those dots to make sure that we don't have this problem. So, and so that moving forward, like you're saying, that we're not wrapping boxes that are, that are imminent for replacement. So Jeff, if you, if you could just really briefly hit on where we are with that aspect?
When this item came up, we did go back and take a look at where we're going forward. I can't speak to the history of it just yet in terms of prior to my being here or during this last season, but I know going forward, we forecasted out a, a good amount of time and a good amount of boxes subject to budget, and, you know, those will be replaced over time, and that has been communicated, that list to Anjali's group, which I'm presuming will go on to the Arts Commission as well. So we have begun to plan appropriately. It may have failed prior to this, but going forward, I think we've taken a step in the right direction to improve our communication. So, point well taken.
Okay, so I've got council members with questions here. So I'm gonna start with, I'm just gonna go in order of which they show up on my screen. So Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to be extremely nice on this one. And number one, let me just add, this rework is worse than normal rework. The new boxes, I'm understanding, utility boxes that are replacements actually are larger, and so it has a redesign and an additional cost. And we may not have a key volunteer in place in the future years to help us with that. So we really got to think about this program in its totality. I heard a lot about transparency as if it's a virtue, but it's not a virtue when you point fingers at one of our most valued volunteers. That offends me. It offends me deeply that we have one Commissioner on the Arts Commission has put in endless hours, endless creativity, and this program would not be capable without her, without her. I repeat, we would not be sharing this great art and great display in our community without her, and we're throwing her under the bus. So you're transparency, but blame her. You know, misleading the contract to her legal authority. That is just offensive. That particular Commissioner actually asked the city, mentioned, we got to reinstall traffic signals. They said, okay, it's up to the city to check the contract and funding and say, hey, wait, let me check those contract and funding. They did not do so. She was led to believe, she's very conscientious, she's not gonna do anything irresponsible. She's one of the most responsible, most thorough volunteers we have. So I'm gonna just say, I'm very upset with the way we treat this volunteer and other volunteers on the Art Commission. Let me remind you, the Art Commission is assigned by the council to fulfill the council mission. The staff member is a liaison, not a leader. I've observed leadership, and that's, that less than a liaison role in this Art Commission. So I really want us to look at the Art Commission and do a deep dive. Are we acting as a liaison, as a staff member, which is bridging communication between the council and the Art Commission? It's broken. There's attitudes throughout the Art Commission. We're losing Art Commissioners. We've lost our Commissioners. Let's fix it. No more, no more. We have to value our volunteers. They are the critical mass that help us be successful as a city, and we're blowing it. Let's, I, one, I want, rather than transparency, let's own up to the accountability and responsibility to fix it, and I need staffs to help us do that. The, Christie handled all the waste of money that we're not carefully planning and replacements are costing us larger than the originals. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do with the ones we replace? Are we just gonna discard them and never see them again? Who's gonna, who's gonna create the artwork in the future? Do we have a plan going forward? So we have a lot of work. We gotta not only time it with Public Works, we gotta figure out how do we get the artwork going forward. So there's a lot of problems, a lot of money that may have been wasted or will be wasted going forward, but darn it, don't treat our volunteers poorly. They deserve kudos, especially the one behind this project. So thank you.
Okay, next I show Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I, Scott, I'd like you to go and find out why the city manager didn't sign this contract. I understand there wasn't necessarily a regularly scheduled meeting, but there was no reason to have this contractor have to work without a contract when the city manager could sign it. So, yeah, transparency and accountability, that buck stops with the city manager. So where was he? I, I just, I echo what Deputy Mayor said of, why is this coming council for $6,800 when the city manager should be handling this? And why is he, like, how does he pick and choose which does he bring? He, he, he should have been signing this. He should have been taking care of this. So, you know, and then, on the other hand, we're not getting accounting of our legal fees. We're not getting, you know, our monthly reports on our CARES Act spending and things like that. So it is very concerning to me. Thanks.
Councilmember Odell? You're on mute.
I just want to say that I believe this whole issue should probably be dealt with at the mid-buy, because if we are throwing away money the way Deputy Mayor mentioned earlier, perhaps this whole program should be looked at again. I think the city taxpayers, even though $6,800 bucks is not much, $6,800 frankly is equivalent to what I pay in taxes for three years to the city. So I, I don't think this is an inconsequential issue. So I believe this is a subject for mid-buy discussion, and maybe the Arts Commission and the council should probably have a little discussion about this in advance. Thank you.
Okay, my comment is, I guess, more of a suggestion, which is gonna be that Deputy Mayor and I perhaps meet with, which would be the, the Arts Commissioner that's involved with this, and maybe we can try to figure out where the gap is, and, and try to meet with staff and then just try to sit down and try to figure out where exactly the gaps are and, and bring it back. We can do it with the two of us, or we could add a third person if you'd like. If we wanted to do that, I think we could include Councilmember Ross. He seemed to be very heartfelt into this, so that would be my suggestion. I'd wait until the end of the year. I would do that, except it, this seems like it, waiting on this topic may not be the best resolution on this. That's just my suggestion. Council can weigh in on that, but let's let Councilmember Gamblin speak.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. You know, put this in reality, $6,800. Rather than everybody get all wound up and get ourselves all with big, these big, huge conversations and pointing fingers and everything else that goes on, I, I would think it would be a much better idea to simply call the principals together, put them on a Zoom call, and, and get the input. But before we start saying, this guy's doing that, or this person's doing that, or I can't believe that this is happening, let's at least put the principals together in a room, have a conversation about it, and come to some understanding. If it doesn't work out then, we can take it to the next step, but let's not elevate this to a mid-buy or to anything else. Let's get a casual conversation going and see if there's a simple answer to this. Thank you.
Meanwhile, do you think we should get this paid ASAP?
Yes, which is why I was going to make a motion for approval.
I second.
Any other discussion? Okay, motion to approve this. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. And how does the council feel about having three of us go and talk and do exactly what I had suggested and that what Councilmember Gamblin had suggested is trying to get everybody into a room and, and trying to figure out where we're at and what happened and try to figure out where the gap is?
Excellent suggestion.
Okay, we will move forward on that. Okay, folks, it is now almost 11:15. We are not gonna get through it all, but let's move forward. Number 15, and this is funding awarded to the city for the Issaquah Falls City Road Improvement Project, and this is Jeff.
Jeff, as if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Okay, so let me start again. What we're seeking tonight is council direction on how to reprioritize utilizing the remaining $1.5 million funds that were assigned as part of a $5 million package to the Issaquah Falls City Road Corridor Improvements. As you may recall, 3.5 million was assigned to Phase One, which has been spent and built, and 1.5 million was earmarked and set aside for Phase Two. It is staff's, I guess, concern at the moment, given current project cost overruns on Phase One, as well as undefined funding yet for Phase Two, that these funds ought to be reprioritized into one of two places. In order to do that, we needed to work with the state legislative representative, in this case, it was Senator Mullet, Mark Mullet, in his office. We had a meeting in August of this year and discussed the challenges that we were facing and the possibilities moving forward. It was the senator's suggestion that we go back to council and solidify a, a consensus on either spending it on Phase One, which he and his, his team would support, and this would help to address cost overruns on the Phase One project. On the Phase One project, we've had to date approximately $5.7 million in cost overruns, totaling more than 25% of the project cost. He and his team would support dollar, these dollars going towards that specific element of the project. The other opportunity that we have is, rather than waiting and trying to find if we're gonna come up with 18 to 20-plus million dollars for whatever phase of project, excuse me, for Phase Two of the project, there's an opportunity to spend the $1.5 million on a smaller project. For instance, we've talked about the potential mitigating the roadway flooding on the north end of the corridor there by the school. We could do a grind and overlay type project. We could begin to do some widening in the corridor, or we could maybe do pedestrian crossings, or some combination thereof. Those, those particular project locations, when we talked about flooding, flooding, we had a, I think, a 10 to 14-day road closure a couple of years ago when it flooded north of the school there. That would be what I would consider a very high-priority project. And of course, there are other opportunities to spend the dollars on Phase Two in a smaller sense. Some of these would also require matches of which we've not defined yet. So what we're here to find out tonight from the council and have a dialogue and discussion about, and hopefully a motion, would be where to spend the funds, either on Phase One would be where to spend the funds, either on Phase One, um, which will help address our cost overruns and shore up our outstanding loan that we have in the transportation, um, funding, uh, fund, or to earmark these for a Phase Two project. Um, and it would be staff's recommendation, at least at this point, to use, if it is a Phase Two project, uh, we could come back to you with more information or that the option two A would be the preferred project going forward from the staff standpoint. So with that, um, we are seeking council guidance. Mayor, back to you.
Okay, I have lots of hands up. So, um, we are gonna start with Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, um, my preference would be, um, Option One, which is to put the money towards the cost overruns. I'm not under the impression that that will, um, allow us to evade some of the, um, mitigations that are going to be necessary on Phase Two, um, namely the, the low point where we had the flooding that Jeff mentioned, which was in February of 2020. Um, but I think right now, um, we have lots of cost overruns on Phase One. Um, and that would be my preference, is use the money there first. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so Jeff, you said that Senator Mark Mullet's office and Senator Mullet are supportive of us applying it to One, but you have an out and out said we actually have approval to do that. Uh, does that need to go back to the state legislature to get approval? And are, if, and, you know, do we need to do that first? Because I'm concerned that we need to make sure we comply with the terms of the full five million dollar grant and we don't put that money in jeopardy.
During the course of the meeting, it was our understanding that, um, we needed to go back to the city council and seek, uh, concurrence on a priority direction from there, assuming that we picked, let's just say, Option One. Um, if that's the consensus of the council, then we would write a letter to his office asking them to reprioritize and reappropriate those funds to Phase, uh, to the Phase One project. And that would be effectively, assuming the council or the legislature is in support of that, this is where the funds would lie. This, this is based on a conversation that we had in August with, um, and we had also, just for reference, uh, the mayor was there, Deputy Mayor was there and City Manager. And, um, you know, Christie could back me up on that if you want her input.
Yeah, I'm not doubting what you're saying. I, I'm just trying to clarify. So, so to understand what you said, I think what we're saying is it's not a done deal. Like, the, the process is we pick a priority, you're gonna write a letter, Senator Mullet's gonna take it to the rest of the legislature. So it's not done. So we probably ought to have like a Plan A and a Plan B because, uh, we need, we need him to be able to have other things to negotiate. Because once again, we were given a five million dollar grant based on a particular scope. We are now coming back and saying we're not going to do that scope of work. Um, and so we need to make sure that we don't lose this 1.5 million. And even more important, we don't lose the three and a half million we've already spent. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, we've been assured that the 3.5 million will not be, um, taken back. It is built and improvement. It was vested in construction and is not, it was not on the table for us to have to take in and do a reappropriation back to the state. That was not in the conversation, um, nor anything that you believed was an issue at the time.
Okay, um, so, you know, uh, I guess I'd be willing to approve it for Option One only if we can get the full, uh, you know, retrospective of how we ran over 25% on the cost on that project. Um, because again, getting a, a full, how, how the heck did that happen? Um, I think is, is super important because we can't, we can't keep having all these cost overruns. This is a third, this is the third conversation tonight of cost overruns. Um, and, and Jeff, I'm not pointing the finger at you. I just think it feels like we have an endemic problem in the city where we're just not keeping track or paying attention or something's happening. So I'd be supportive of that.
I want to be clear that we have, um, if you'll recall, we came before the council in, in the May or June. Um, we had to deal with a inter-fund loan and we expressed all the different costs and, and forecasted overruns associated with the project that got us to that point. Um, I'm certain we could go back and look at the agenda packet at that time. If you can't find it, let me know by email and I'd be happy to send you the background information that articulates that detail.
Okay, we can talk more about what a retrospective is. Like, I get, like, you walked us through what those costs were. I'm, I'm getting to the, what was the root cause? Like, what are we gonna do for the next project to make sure we don't have these kind of cost overruns? Um, that, that to me is the retrospective. It's not just the accounting of what the costs are for, but understanding the root cause problems. And then what processes will we put in place going forward to make sure that never happens again? Um, but that's fine.
To that point, just, just so that you know, and I think it's a great suggestion, we're calling it Lessons Learned. And we actually have an internal staff meeting coming up, um, on two separate occasions for multiple hours to actually go back through the last five or six, uh, major construction projects, including the current E-Bright Creek project, and doing a lessons learned and then coming up with strategies, uh, means and methods to improve the process going forward. All of which may also result in a desire or need or recommendation for additional internal staff, um, you know, to help support these construction projects. But your point is well taken and we're embarking upon, um, a process to, of lessons learned and we're excited about that.
Awesome. Um, uh, so as, uh, where I land on this is, is sure, let's apply it to money that we've already spent. But I'd also, uh, understand and make sure that, that, uh, we do have a mitigation plan for this roadway flooding because again, um, the, we're not gonna spend any money today and then we'll spend 10 times as much because we're gonna have to fix it as an emergency tomorrow is really not a good way to manage. So I, I don't, I guess my concern about applying it to money we've already spent is that we're in danger of not approving a mitigation for this roadway flooding in, in the future and that work not getting done. And then it'll only get done when it turns into a Thompson Hill and half of a hillside collapses and then we don't have a choice but to fix it. So, um, we gotta do both. So I guess part of me says I don't care where we apply it because one's already done and the other one has to get done.
Back to you, Mayor.
Yes. Uh, okay, next we see Councilmember Ross, followed by Councilmember Odell.
Yeah, Jeff, refresh my memory. What is the cost overrun amount from Phase One?
Uh, Phase One was, uh, about 5.7 million dollars, 25% give or take.
Okay, so the, the cost overrun is more than 1.5 million? No, not quite. So you're gonna partially use the 1.5 million? If you fully funded the overrun, then you have some leftover from the 1.5, right? For mitigation, might?
No, no, we're, the, the 1.5 would go back into the Fund 340 as essentially a grant after the fact, if you will, or as though we had the money to begin with. And it'll be a plan in Fund 340.
So total cost is over five million, so you can apply? Yeah, gotcha. Okay, so, okay, you don't have to split the baby. So you'd either Option One in its totality of the 1.5, or we can apply. Do we, let me ask you this. Do you, can, do you have to apply the full 1.5 to Phase Two? If you don't apply it, can't split it between two phases?
If that became the recommendation of the council, um, my takeaway from the meeting was our city council ought to collectively have a priority going forward. My brain was thinking either one or the other, but if for some reason the council wanted to split it for some reason.
Yeah, I don't.
Try to apply it, I don't. That would be up to you.
No, I don't see a real reason. I think, uh, we can fully absorb it and Option One would be my preference. And if that's not possible, then we have to look at Option Two A.
Uh, one, one side note related to the flooding mitigation. We are having our stormwater, uh, utility rate study in next year. And one of the capital priorities might, might ought to be this particular project. So it gets funded sooner than later. So just throwing that out as a, as a tool.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, next up we have Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Jeff, what's the cost of, uh, Option Two A?
I don't have that number, but it, it's in the neighborhood of two and a half to three million dollars.
Okay.
It's in that zone.
So my, uh, my priority would be, uh, Priority One, Option One rather, contingent upon getting the necessary legislative approval to do that. Uh, absent that, I would, uh, take the, uh, 1.5 million and put it into Lewis Thompson. And I would, uh, be very interested in knowing the results of your lessons learned analysis.
Um, I think we will definitely report back to the council. I think it's valuable information. Um, it may be a little hard pill to swallow, but, um, by the same token, uh, moving forward, if we draw a line in the sand and, and look at it as a learning exercise, um, I think the city will become, uh, much better for it. So we look forward to sharing that with you.
We can all learn from our mistakes. Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, Council, uh, Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, I'm actually with everybody else speaking. Um, it seems pretty clear that if you have extra dollars, you put it toward a cost overrun. So I'm done. Thanks.
Back to you, Mayor.
Councilmember Trane?
Option One, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, I would also be Option One. Okay, council, um, we are at.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, can we have a motion? Just, just to solidify it?
Okay, so we need, we're looking for a motion for him to, for a motion for our option.
We're Option One.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for Option One. Any more discussion? Now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We greatly appreciate your time and effort on this matter.
Okay, excellent. Okay, it is 11:29, so we're gonna have to, um, do a couple of things. We either need to extend. Um, but we have one thing that they're telling us we have to at least do tonight. And that is, so, look.
Move to extend to midnight.
Okay, so, um.
What is it? I'm sorry, Mayor, you cut out what is.
Okay, so let me go through what we, we have got to do. Um, we must do number seventeen. We do?
Well, number eighteen's off the, uh, agenda.
So.
Okay, so let's, so let's switch this in order and let's do, see if we can get this, the two of them done.
I move to extend to 11:45.
Okay, all right.
We'd have to have a motion to.
Yeah, I, I, all right, well, we can try, but, um, I don't wanna see people start dropping off here. Okay, it's 11:30, motion to extend to what time?
11:45.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion to extend to 11:45. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Move to, oh, sorry.
Nay.
Nay. Okay.
I move to, uh, adjust the agenda and do the Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant Opportunity next.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go and, uh, we're gonna hit the Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Action Plan and Implementation Grant Opportunity. David Pyle.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Um, tonight we have with us, uh, Miriam Leitner, our Planning Manager. Um, and she will be presenting to the council an overview of this grant opportunity that we have. Um, and we're curious what the council's feedback is on this. Please note that there is a tight timeline here and the grant will be due later this week. So if you do choose to take action on this, we will be needing to submit this later this week. Miriam?
Thanks, David. I am just gonna quickly share my screen. And I'm also gonna turn off my camera so that you guys don't see me reading all my notes. And I'll try to go through as quickly as possible. I know it's late. So this evening, I'm gonna be presenting a grant opportunity from the Washington State Department of Commerce for your consideration. And we wanted to start tonight's presentation by quickly highlighting the city's recent policy and regulation work related to housing for the sake of speed, given how late it is. Um, you can see the items on screen that we've accomplished. I just wanted to highlight a couple, which is Semamish Homegrown, which was started in 2017. And shortly after that, the first phase of the development regulation updates, which, um, focused on addressing community concerns related to neighborhood character and incentivizing affordable housing through density rounding. Throughout all this time, the city has been an active member of a regional coalition for housing, also known as ARCH, to support the development of affordable housing in our region. As the city gets ready for the 2024 update to our comprehensive plan, which is gonna start in 2022, a lot of our attention goes to the King County Countywide Planning Policies, or CPPs. For cities located within King County, the CPPs are what implements the Washington State Growth Management Act and the Vision 2050 Multi-County Planning Policies from the Puget Sound Regional Council. And as we look at the 2021 CPPs, we see a lot more focus on housing equity, correcting historical disparities and addressing current disparities relating to housing. We also see an emphasis on housing affordability and access, ensuring that all people, regardless of their income level, have access to a range of housing options across neighborhoods throughout the cities so that they can choose what best meets their needs. And finally, we're seeing more requirements related to collecting and utilizing data to ensure cities understand and are planning for future housing needs, but also that the construction of affordable housing is actually being achieved. These same themes are echoed in the amendments made to House Bill 1220 this past spring, which included updated language around growth management planning goals and the mandatory elements of comprehensive plans. As part of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update, the housing element must be reviewed in detail and updates are likely gonna be needed to ensure that we're addressing the 2021 CPPs and following the requirements of Puget Sound Regional Council and the state. The city's housing strategy, Semamish Homegrown, sets a strong foundation for the city's housing work and contains the strategies related to the housing themes that you see on screen. The grant opportunity I'm gonna be talking about tonight aligns with Semamish Homegrown themes of housing supply and variety and housing affordability. House Bill 1923 was passed in 2019 and was codified as RCW 3670A 600. The bill aimed to encourage cities planning under the Growth Management Act to adopt actions to increase residential building capacity. This led to the state releasing grant funding to encourage construction of additional affordable and market-rate housing and a greater variety of housing options and at prices accessible to a greater variety of incomes, including strategies aimed at the for-profit, single-family home market. In mid-August of this year, Commerce opened the Housing Action and Implementation Grant, referred to as the Happy Grant, which is the 2021 cycle of this grant funding. Cities can apply to create a housing action plan or to implement strategies in adopted housing action plan. Staff believe that applying for the development of a housing action plan would be beneficial in proactively addressing the needs for more diverse housing types and more affordable housing within the city. These were both themes that we heard about in outreach for Semamish Homegrown. And as I mentioned earlier, the CPPs and House Bill 1220 require us to look at them more deeply as part of our comp plan update. Another benefit of applying for the development of a housing action plan is that the scope of work can include an evaluation of our current housing element, helping create efficiencies and likely saving some money when working on the comprehensive plan update. The grant award is up to $100,000 and is a performance-based grant, meaning that you're reimbursed for your expenses based on the project components being completed. The final 20% of the grant is linked to the adoption of the Housing Action Plan. The proposed scope of work for the Housing Action Plan includes three actions, each with a series of steps and deliverables. You can see the detailed scope of work with all the steps in Exhibit One. Several of the steps are required by the RCW and those are highlighted in light blue in the exhibit. Many of these required steps align with the King County CPPs and will help ensure the city's responsiveness. The project team, which will include city staff, ARCH staff and ARCH's consultant, will use various outreach techniques and extensive data analysis to better understand the existing housing stock and use within the city to project future needs and demands related to housing. housing, and to identify barriers to building more diverse housing types in Samamish. The results will then be compiled into a report and presented to the Planning Commission and the City Council in the fall of 2022. Action 2 focuses on strategy development. ARCH and their consultant will identify strategies and other tools to address the needs and projected housing demands identified as part of Step 1, or Action 1, excuse me. These strategies will then be further assessed and shared with the public for their input before being finalized and integrated into the draft housing action plan. The draft housing action plan will include an implementation schedule and specific metrics so that the city can monitor progress over time, similar to what was done for the Urban Forest Management Plan. Action 3 relates to project adoption. We anticipate having two meetings with both the Planning Commission and City Council, the first to review and provide comments on the draft housing action plan, and the second being a public hearing to ensure that the community and stakeholders have the opportunity to provide feedback as well. The City Council public hearing would be scheduled for early June of 2023, allowing us to reach the grant deadline of adoption before June 15. As I mentioned previously, the grant utilizes a performance-based contract, so the city would be paid based on completion of key deliverables that align with the scope of work we just discussed, and you can see those deliverables on screen. Again, the final item, which would be the adopted housing plan, is required to be 20% of the overall project budget. So there were many components of the grant opportunity that felt like a really strong fit for the city and for the upcoming work that's going to be required, but there's also other approaches that can be taken. So we wanted to present the different options for consideration tonight. The first option is to apply for the grant. Assuming a grant gets awarded to the city, this option would allow the city to better understand and plan for the city's long-term housing needs. The option also brings efficiencies and cost savings, which you'll see noted by the two icons on the screen, that will come into play when we do the broader comp plan update. One item to note is that if council decides to move forward with option 1, the mayor would need to sign the letter included as Exhibit 2, which is required to be included with the grant application due this Thursday. Another option for consideration would be to integrate the creation of an action plan or to refine the existing housing strategies into the work being done for the comp plan update, so there is an actionable plan in place to address the King County CPPs. This option would still allow for the comp plan and the action plan to integrate more seamlessly, but additional funding may be required in the next budget cycle to obtain necessary data and develop the action plan or refine the housing strategies. And then the third option would be to complete the comp plan update first, and then create a housing action plan or refine the existing housing strategies in future years. This option would allow council to focus on setting the goals and policies first, and then later develop a corresponding action plan for implementation, similar to what was done with Samamish Homegrown. Like the section, second option, additional funding would likely be required down the road, and there's also a risk of losing some momentum and needing to do some outreach to reengage the community in this work, which could add to some project costs. So that concludes my presentation for this evening. I'll hand things back to the mayor for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Okay, I see lots of hands, and I'm very excited for this. Councilmember O'Dell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Miriam. Nice summary of things. Is this grant a one-time grant or an ongoing grant?
So I believe it is a ongoing grant, just looking at the history. So it looks like they released grant funding, I believe, in 2020, and then again in 2021. So there's potential that this opportunity could come about in the future. I think the question would just be alignment with the comp plan update as well, which will be starting.
Did I see an amount of 100K someplace?
Yes. So the maximum grant you can request is 100,000. In the exhibit that we provided, we came in, I think, just under that by about $200 or so.
Okay. Is there a headcount increase that goes with this, David?
There is not. So it would be our existing staff, and then we are partnering with ARCH, and ARCH will have a consultant that will be assisting on the project as well. So the majority, almost all of the budget, will go toward funding ARCH's consultant, and then ARCH staff time, and our staff time will be in kind.
Okay, good. Final question. Is there anything in this that deals with preserving existing low-cost housing?
Not specifically, but I do think that it's something that we would want to consider as part of it. And I guess it, it does kind of come in terms of talking about displacement. And so by preserving housing in that way, you're also preventing displacement.
Yeah, I have seen, in the time I've lived here, which has been quite a while, I've seen an awful lot of smaller houses disappear and become much larger houses and much more unaffordable houses. So I think part of the focus should be on preserving what we have in addition to creating more. So that's my two bits for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So this grant would be to help us create the plan for how we're going to meet the CPPs. Is that kind of what you're suggesting? And the question is, you know, kind of when do we focus on that? Like, because here's where I'm confused, right? So the CPPs call for us to have 15% of our housing stock at 30% AMI or below, 15% of our housing stock between 31% and 50% AMI, and 19% of our housing stock to be between 51% and 80% of AMI. And current 81% of our housing stock is at 100% or over AMI. So we, we've got a huge gap. And so I guess, you know, I feel like we have a lot of upfront work we have to do. So I'm a little concerned about like option 3, which is like, we'll kind of figure it out later. But help me understand, because maybe, maybe I'm not kind of understanding what the suggestions are here with the grant funding.
Sure. So the grant funding doesn't directly relate to the CPPs. However, the CPPs integrate a lot of the same RCW requirements, and so this would help prepare us as we work toward updating the comprehensive plan, where we will have to respond to the CPPs. So there's a lot of overlap between the two, and you gain some efficiencies as part of that. So I wouldn't say that for this particular grant, we would be, you know, looking at those numeric goals that you mentioned. It would be more, you know, looking over all of the city's needs and the future, and then trying to plan for those to hopefully get us to those percentages that you mentioned. But I think there'll need to be some interim steps along the way in addition to the development of a housing action plan.
And how much is this grant for? Would it be four?
Just, we are requesting just under $100,000.
Okay. And how much do we contribute to ARCH each year right now?
That is a good question, and if you give me just a few moments to open my files, I can answer. So I can tell you that every year, we contribute $100,000 to the ARCH Housing Trust Fund, which is what contributes to the construction of affordable housing. We also have membership dues that fund the administrative portion of ARCH, and that's the cost that changes every year that I can get for you.
Okay, so we contribute $100,000 a year to affordable housing?
Correct.
All right. Well, I say we go apply for the grant, and we start developing plans ASAP because we have such a huge gap. I mean, we need 49% of our housing supply is supposed to be, you know, at, or, you know, affordable at 80% or below. And right now, we only have less than 20% is affordable below 100% AMI. So we've got a huge, huge, huge gap in even just, even just the affordable range of 51 to 80%, you know, even if that's the, what we targeted. So yeah, whatever we can do to start planning sooner, because we just have a big hole to dig ourselves out of. And I don't disagree with Councilmember O'Dell, you know, making sure we have housing stock in these different AMI ranges is making sure we maintain any that we might have, and, you know, making sure that we, that we convert more, right? Whether that's through development or converting existing housing to these affordable units. So whatever we can do to start working on that yesterday, that's, that's what we got to go do.
Okay, council, we've got time for just a couple more. Deputy Mayor?
Move to extend to 12:15 AM. And then I'll ask my questions.
I second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of extending to 12:15, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
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 Okay, so that's four nays.
Move to extend to midnight.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those nays?
Nay.
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 Okay, so we're getting close. Okay.
Okay, then I'm going to go. So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit, trying to figure out how this reconciles with both Bluma, as well as the housing targets that we've asked for. And our attorney has dropped off the call, so I can't get answers about Bluma. So I'm struggling with this one because I, I'm not seeing how this is dovetailing. So if there's staff that wants to explain it to me, but the fact is that our attorney has dropped off the call, so I can't ask our attorney, and that's giving me some heartburn.
I understand that. David, I'll let you go first, and then if I feel like anything is missing, I will jump in after that.
So, so for, for staff, this, this grant presents an opportunity for us to begin the process of analyzing how Samamish is going to address the gap in housing. We, we have our Samamish Homegrown, which identifies that we, we want to increase the variety of housing choice and affordability of housing. And what it does is it looks at, it will help us analyze our current development regulations and look at ways in which we can help incentivize some housing affordability or try to promote some diversity in housing being built. It will allow us to look forward to the future, to look at the gap we have in housing, and help identify where we might look for changes to land use patterns in the city as part of our comprehensive plan update. It could look at other funding mechanisms or other partnership opportunities for us to identify where we might find builders that might be interested in building a different type of housing than what we've seen historically or traditionally built in the city. And these are all things that, that if we are going to be in compliance with the countywide planning policies with our comprehensive plan update, that we do need to get a head start on as part of the certification process for comprehensive plans includes compliance with or consistency with countywide planning policies. So we see this as an opportunity to get some outside funding, get some outside help, and really try to make some headway on that topic, knowing that we will be tasked with this as part of our comprehensive plan update that's due in 2024.
So let me ask you this question, David. Maybe I'm asking my same question just a different way. You don't see this as potentially being a conflict between Bluma as well as the housing target that we have? Is that a fair statement? Because some of what we can do is not necessarily like creating smaller lots that might provide for a different type of housing. It's potential regulation changes that might encourage a different type of build on an existing lot. Is that a fair assessment?
That's, that's correct. Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
One of, one of the biggest difficulties that jurisdictions have is we can, we can set up our codes so that they incentivize things, but builders just won't build it. There has to be, and we need to analyze, you know, what do we need to do so that builders will build a different type of home on the existing lots that we already have? That's really one of the big questions we have regionally, and it's discussed at planning directors meetings as well. So we're not alone in that, but we are looking for some outside help and trying to figure out how to, how to get that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You went on mute, Karen.
Sorry, getting late. Okay, Councilmember Trine, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, sorry, I make a motion that the city submit an application for the Housing Action Plan and Implementation Grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce.
Second.
Thank you, David Pyle, by the way. I'd like to speak to my motion, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, really quick.
Okay, and I, if you didn't have a second, I'd second that.
I did second it.
Okay.
Hey, look, we, as a council, we know that it, it starts with a vision, moves to the comp plan, regulations, design standards. That is the route when we start looking at land use. One of the things that we have a challenge with in the city, my, even my opponents say this when it comes to the political side of things, is we don't have all the data. This is one of the ways that we can collect the data and get a grant, so we can collect the actual, get the information that we need so that we can move forward on getting a comp plan that is something that the residents of Samamish would like to see. So it all works together, so I just want to really thank the council for considering this, and David Pyle, for your staff, for all the work that you're doing and bringing this forward. Let's get the mayor to sign this letter and move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we have got a motion on the floor, and we have a second, and we have got discussion. So Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, Miriam, you brought up in your presentation that we have implemented some policies to encourage affordable housing through density rounding. How many affordable units have been built based on that policy, and in what AMI range are those affordable?
I can take that one.
Remain to the motion on the floor? Sounds more like questions again.
We have order. It's getting late. Can we just move forward? Thank you.
Okay, so.
So that's it? Well, I just, I want to, I want to state that one thing, are you going to interrupt me again, Councilmember Trine? I'll just stop.
Yes, I would actually, in point of order. You can ask.
I haven't even said anything yet. You can't call a point of order when I haven't said it yet.
Okay, it's getting late, folks. So, you know.
May I speak?
Yes, as long as it is to the topic of what we are going to be voting on. Go ahead.
Okay, great. It is, it is to the motion. So Councilmember Trine stated that he.
Come on, guys. Get going.
Thank you, Tom. So you stated that, you know, one of the things we need to do is we need to get the data, and I fully support that, particularly because I just want to remind everybody that we are legally obligated to meet the APPs, and David Pyle already addressed that, that the county has to review and approve our comprehensive plan. And if our comprehensive plan doesn't have a plan to meet these countywide planning policies, our comprehensive plan will not be approved. So I just want to, I just want everyone to be cognizant of that, that that is, we do in fact support getting this grant and any other money we can get because we have a lot of work to do to come up with strategies on how we are going to close these gaps, because we must demonstrate in our comprehensive plan.
Point of order, please. We've been told about, we've been told about five different times that we have a lot of making up to do. We have a lot of catching up to do. We all realize that. Could we please call the question? Thank you.
Okay, question's been called.
Okay, got to, got to take a vote to call the question. If that's what you ask for.
Vote to call for the question. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay, one nay. Okay, we're going to move forward. We're calling the question. All, and so, please state the motion.
Mr. Applied for the grant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we submit the application, you sign the letter, and we apply for the, the money.
Thank you. All those in favor of applying for the grant, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Okay, we are applying for the grant. Thank you very much, Mr. Pyle, Mayor. Thank you very much. Pardon?
Second.
Oh, actually, actually, we got a, okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a first.
Can we just wrap up the last item?
Yeah, I mean.
There's a.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, we have a second, we have to move on the motion. Okay, motion on the floor, we have a second, all those in favor of...
Adjourning.
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 Oh, it's late. Say aye.
It's very late.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not being recognized.
You can't, there's a motion to adjourn, not debatable. Sorry, Councilmember Ross.
Yes, I want to just...
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so we've got four nays here. Okay, well, we got three minutes left. Okay, so Council, Councilmember Ross.
Second.
Councilmember Trine, why are you shouting?
We didn't, we didn't have it to dismiss, so Councilmember Ross, did you want to speak?
You have another motion on the floor.
That's right, and it's been seconded.
What is the motion on the floor now?
The motion was to extend to 12:15. Oh, motion to 12, I seconded someone motion that.
Yeah.
I seconded it already.
Waiting to vote, so I don't have to move it to 12:20.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, so I didn't completely even miss that motion. Okay, so somebody made it to 12:15?
15, yes.
Oh, God.
12:16 now.
Go 20.
Okay, motion on the floor and a second to extend to 12:15. All those, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Okay, you're gonna have to do a roll call on that one.
So, this is a motion to extend the meeting till 12:15. Mayor Karen Moran?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchel?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Ken Gablin?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Odell?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Chris Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Pam Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay.
You voted nay on all the other motions to extend, Kent.
Item 16, need to do it.
Let's go.
Okay, let's see how far we get. I don't think we're gonna get it, but let's see how far we get on item 16.
Mayor David Pyle, Community Development, tonight we have Lindsay Osborn, who is a special projects manager with the Department of Community Development, and Lindsay has been working on the topic of updating the city's code to change the local share percentage related to impact fees. Lindsay?
Thank you, David. Good evening, Councilmembers, Honorable Mayor, again Lindsay Osborn of Community Development Services. I will go through this in a much more abbreviated version than I originally was going to, so let me know if I need to backtrack. We're here tonight to talk about Chapter 21A 105 of SMAMISH municipal code, which is specific to school impact fees. I'm gonna go over a brief overview and then discuss the Planning Commission recommendation and any questions you may have. Earlier this year, staff received direction from City Council to move forward with looking into updating the developer contribution associated with school impact fees. Currently, it's at 50%, and we have moved forward with a proposal of updating that to 75% of developer contribution. We've also cleaned up a few Spurgner errors in this code section by removing interim comprehensive plan and fixing incorrect code citations. On September 2nd of this year, Planning Commission held a public hearing on these draft recommendations and deliberated after closing the public hearing. Public comment was received prior to and during the Planning Commission hearing, and that was included in your agenda packet this evening as Exhibit 6. This is, GMA requires that communities plan for capital facilities. It helps support new development. Impact fees can only be used for new facilities needed as a result of new development, and the city collects these school impact fees on behalf of school districts. We also adopt the CFPs for each school district on an annual basis. The current ones for all three school districts were included with your packet this evening as well as Exhibits 2, 3, and 4. Existing, the fee is calculated on district-by-district basis. We have two fees per school district, one for single family and one for multifamily. The current discount factor, as I mentioned, is 50%. It's been in existence since 1991, when King County adopted an impact fee ordinance. SMAMISH adopted this structure in 99 when we incorporated and became a city, and it's the existing formula and discount factor that is used widely across the state. This factor takes into account number and cost of growth related to facility projects, student generation number, credits for state school construction funds toward their planned products, excuse me, projects, and credits for taxes. In 21A 105040, we talk about fee calculations, what the different portions of the actual calculation that can be found in subsection 100 include, which is now shown on your screen. It looks like it's a complicated formula because it breaks it out into four different numbers per grade, spans elementary, middle slash junior, and high school, your tax payment credit, your facilities credit, which then gets you to your unfunded need, and then you take the unfunded need and apply the local impact or multiplier. So, this unfunded need divided by two gives you what we have been calling the 50% multiplier as it exists today. So, what's being proposed? The impact fees calculated on district-by-district basis using the district CFPs. We're keeping the single family and multifamily different rates, but increasing the discount factor from 50% to 75%. I can break away quickly and show you in the PDF code what we have changed, or I can continue this presentation and wrap back to that code. At the end, there's just a few more slides, which would you prefer, Madam Mayor?
You should probably just go through the slides.
Okay, I will continue. So, what we wanted to point out with this slide is showing you what we have collected or what the impact fees are for 2021 for single-family units versus the multifamily units at that 50% calculation. These are adopted and what exists today. So, isiqua for single-family is $18,213 per single-family unit, Lake Washington $15,070, Snoqualmie Valley $10,550.22. Same, but for multifamily, that calculation for isiqua is $12,043, Lake Washington $2,701, and Snoqualmie Valley at $4,730.65. So, if you look at what that cost would be if there was no multiplier, that essentially doubles, so those numbers are in this far right column. If we apply what we're proposing this evening, the 75% would be collected this year, had it been in effect this year, would have been $27,319.50 for isiqua, $22,605 for Lake Washington, and $15,825.33 for Snoqualmie Valley on the single-family units. And then again, proportionately, you can see that on the screen as well, what that increased amount would have been at the 75% for multifamily. So, staff recommended the Planning Commission code changes as outlined in Exhibit 1 of the Agenda Bill, which if you look at those, or did look at those code changes in redline, you can see that there are not many changes needed. Corrections to this code section to facilitate this change. Planning Commission recommended with a vote of four to two that City Council adopt the proposed amendments to Chapter 21A 05. SMC school impact fees is presented by staff and as described in Exhibit 1 of the Agenda Bill this evening. Next steps will be to hold a public hearing on November 1st of this year, then any deliberate, your deliberations and a potential adoption via ordinance for these changes. With that, I'm open to questions or going back to the PDF code changes, whichever you prefer, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I know there's gonna be lots of questions, and I'm, we'll probably have to put this on another agenda for more questions. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Hey, you know, collecting more money for schools, I'm generally all in, except for when the school districts come back and say, "We strongly recommend against it." So, can anyone answer for me? In the letter that the school districts provided, they said that the, that they oppose the desire to change the rate because of, what do they call it? Having it be non-standard creates a risk, right, and would cause potential for project by project mitigation. So, it says that right now, the formula necessarily uses averages across new residential development to generate the standard fee. The districts also rely on that uniformity across the jurisdictions. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the wording, but it sounds like there's a legal implication of them not having them be standard across the jurisdictions, right? So, since the school district span multiple cities and the unincorporated King County area, if we charge a different fee, that causes potentially some problem. Can anyone explain what that problem might be?
So, what we can do is we can come back to you on November 1st with a summary of that from our legal staff. Neither Lindsay nor I are attorneys and are not equipped to provide you an overview or a summary of legal risks associated with making this change. That would have to come from legal staff.
Okay. Do you know what they, when they say project by project mitigation determinations?
I do not know what that means.
Okay, and then it also says that the school districts, not the city, will have to defend this. So, again, I think our intention is good. Our intention is we want to raise more money for the school districts, but if the school districts are going to be the ones on the hook to defend this legally, the amount of money we're gonna raise, what's our, what's our housing target, like 700 housing units? Like, we're not even gonna raise enough money to cover the legal costs with these differences, potentially. So, I'm just concerned that we have really intentions, but that the result is actually going to cost the districts more money than it raises them. Is, am I, am I, is my math in the right order of magnitude there?
Like, I, I don't know what the cost of defending something would be if there was a legal claim. I would have to leave the legal risk up to legal and am unsure of what any defense might be in that area. I do hear what you're saying, however, I don't have numbers that could support any calculation either way.
Yep, but we're only talking about, I mean, even if we built out all of the remaining houses in our housing targets, we're only talking about a couple million dollars, right?
So, it would be whatever the, whatever the difference is between the 21 rate with 50% multiplier versus the 21 rate with the, with the 75% multiplier times, multiplied across 700 housing units, which is our, our current CPP growth target, whatever that comes out to be would be the difference in the amount of revenue provided to the school districts. Now, we'd also have to consider where the homes are being built. Are they in isiqua districts, Lake Washington district, or Snoqualmie Valley district, so...
And is it multifamily or single family? But I just did a quick, like, even at $12,000 difference times 700 homes, that's $8.4 million over the span of several years. Again, great intention, but if this is gonna cause legal issues that...
You know, let's stay away from legal, because, you know, we do not have a legal person here that can defend one way or the other, so arguments can be made for and against the legal, so without having legal here, let's stay away from that.
Okay, well, let me ask staff this. So, when staff first presented this to us, your recommendation was not do this, that we not raise it. Can you remind us why it was that your recommendation was that we not do it?
That was primarily due to feedback from the school district, which remains consistent.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it just concerns me. I mean, school districts really want to raise more money, so when they come back so strongly that we shouldn't do it, I'm just starting to question, like, again, great intention, but maybe this is not the way to go. And I think that we have to discuss this again when we can get the legal questions answered.
Okay, next is Deputy Mayor. And again, Council, let's stay away from the legal.
So, I think I wanna at least put to bed at least part of this concern, because we are not trailblazers on changing this formula.
I know, but we need to stay away from the legal, because there are lawsuits both ways.
I'm not stepping in legal here. I'm simply giving facts, which is the city of Carnation and Duval have already done this, and they also have unincorporated King County, which has not done this. So, they have a hybrid approach, just as we would if we were to adopt this, and they did the exact same thing we're doing, only they just, they call it a 25% discount, which is essentially what we're doing, but our, the formula that's embedded before us says that we are doing times 75% rather than the divide by two, which is what our code used to say. So, and even if it does raise a couple million dollars, as your back of the napkin math, you know, was there, Councilmember Stewart, that's a couple million dollars that our taxpayers don't have to come to the table and pay, because the development community came forward and paid it. So, I'm all for it, and I appreciate the time and energy that the Planning Commission put into this. One other thing that I've also heard is a potential pushback from the districts, is that they fear that if we do this, that we're raising more money, that that will be a higher hill for them to climb when they have to pass new bonds, and they will have to pass new bonds to build new schools. But I would make a counterargument there that the districts need to educate their voter base, as do we, that we can't raise funds to build schools on impact fees alone. In fact, legally, we can't, right? So, there will always be bonds. What we're trying to do is level that playing field just a little bit more in favor of our taxpayers versus the development community, because they're only coming to the table with half of what the actual calculated impact is right now. Thank you.
Okay, Council, we are at 12:13. So, do we want to continue on with questions? I think we're gonna have to, can you make sure, Scott, this makes it on to another agenda? We're gonna need more time to answer questions on this, and we're gonna need legal presence.
Mayor, this is scheduled currently for November 1st.
Right, and I, I think we're gonna need more time before, more time to discuss this prior to a hearing, though.
Karen, I'm gonna move that we bring this back for discussion next week and finish this discussion.
Second.
Well, we don't know if we're, they're looking at which agenda, because both of the next two meetings, so either, it has to come back either next week or the week after, so just see where it fits in, but please make sure we have time.
Thank you, Mayor. We will go back and take a look, and I'll connect with David, and we'll figure out which it works best for us to bring it back.
Yeah, 'cause I think we definitely need time to be able to work on this one. Okay, all right, and then there was one thing that I wanted to add, because there was a topic that came up this week that I only saw briefly, but, and as, as you may know or may not know, an action had been filed against the city this week, and it was a matter that was a First Amendment violation. And I don't really want to get into the details of the action, and I don't want to speak to that right now, but I do want to speak to, and I want to speak very clearly about, about how the council and how the city and how we feel about the First Amendment. Free speech is a cornerstone for our democracy, and we all recognize the value and the importance of descending opinions and voices, and we always want to make sure that all of our residents have their rights protected to speak their minds freely through whatever medium they choose to use. As we move forward, I suggest that we closely examine any city policies we have protecting free speech to ensure that our First Amendment rights are preserved and protected, and that goes for all residents. Anybody who ever feels that their First Amendment rights are in any way violated, then we need to go and check our policies.
Well, then, maybe when these citizens complain, we should have listened to them so they don't have to sue us.
Thank you very much for your input there, Mayor Moran, appreciate it.
Okay, it is 12:15, 16. I'm looking for that motion.
I'm gonna move to German again.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I think we're out of here. Everybody have a good week.
Good night.
Good night.